Good evening and welcome. I call this meeting of the Pinellas County School Board on September 12th, 2023 to order. This evening's invocation will be given by Reverend Sandra Rogers from Resurrection Episcopal Church. The invocation will be followed by the presentation of the colors by the Northeast High School, JROTC US Army Unit, under the direction of Instructors Lieutenant Colonel Kevin Miller and First Sergeant Joseph T. Walker. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Vice Chair Laura Heine and the National Anthem, sung by the Northeast High School's Valkyries, under the direction of Scott Brackentrip. Please stand and remain standing until the colors have retired and the color guard has exited the conference hall. Reverend Rogers, would you please share the invocation?
Gracious and loving God, you are the fountain of all wisdom. Enlightened by your spirit, those who teach and those who learn. In a time of fear, of uncertainty, of unrest, send down upon this school board and this room the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. That with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the education and well-being of all students. Bless all of our schools, that they may be lively centers for sound learning, new discovery, and the unhindered pursuit of wisdom. Grant to those who teach a steady hand and a patient, loving spirit. Grant to those who learn a mind ready to absorb and a spirit unafraid to accept new and challenging ideas. Unite them in bonds of love and work through their struggles to accomplish your purposes here on earth. We thank you for the guidance here tonight as good decisions are sought for this school board and community. Give rest from any worry and peace to trust in the outcomes from what occurs during this meeting. Guide us safely home and let us awaken to love in the morning, in your holy name. Amen.
Forward, march. Color, full, right face, present, arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Order, arms, right face, forward, march.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Scott Brackentrip, uh, and of course Director of Northeast High School. A French-Canadian folk song by Ranger Emily Crocker.
Thank you so much. To the Northeast High School's Valkyries, fantastic job, it's very beautiful. And thank you to their director, Mr. Brackentrip. I would also like to thank Reverend Rogers for that beautiful prayer this evening, so thank you so much. Today, I would now like to introduce our today's video. Last school year, Pinellas County Schools partnered with Tom Brady's TB-12 Foundation to pilot the TB-12 Method for Pliability and Agility. And this year, our physical education and health teachers are rolling this initiative out to all middle school and high schools across our district, so let's take a look.
We're looking for stability here and not a lot of wobble.
It's the whole background behind TB-12 Method. And it's educating the instructors here on how to relay that to the students. All the way up and squeeze, good. What is going to benefit the students that they're working with, the athletes that they're working with, to better their health and wellness from a holistic standpoint? Specific things like nutrition, the hydration, education, the movement side of things, and then having them understand that and applying it to their lives, whether they're athletes or not.
Super excited about it. So my kids will love the stations. And we kind of already do some things like that, and we'll just integrate it in with our cardiovascular workouts that we do out on the track.
They did bird dog, we did the glute bridge, we did planks, we did the tricep extension, we did deadlifts, the agility ladder, we used the spheres for rolling. I see it benefiting all of the schools because the kids can take ownership of their own workout, taking the things that we teach them, things that they could do on their own, that they don't really need to be at school. They can take it with them from school to college years, to even later years.
The partnership with Pinellas County Schools has been great. Curriculum creation, talking with us, from our body coaches to our corporate team. And we've had some awesome client stories from the students and the teachers.
Fantastic. And now our Public Information Officer, Ms. Isabella Mascaranis, will introduce our professional and community organizations that are present this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Hendrick and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. Representing the Pinellas Educational Support Professionals Association, or PESPA, Nellie Heniez, President. From the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, Lindsay Blackenbaker, Executive Director, and Lee Bryant, President. Representing the North Pinellas League of Women Voters, Vivian Posey. From the Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, Steve Beatty. Members of the media in attendance are Ten Tampa Bay Reporter Shannon Klow and Fox 13 Reporter Jennifer Vegliss and photojournalist Scott Wilson. Today, we have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibility Committee. Please welcome students Procy Kason, Leila Procy Kason, and Micah Jimenez from Northeast High School and their principal, Mike Hernandez.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leila Procy Kason, and I'm currently a senior at Northeast High School and a part of Academy of Finance. I am the president of Northeast Senior Class President, or Student Government of the Year, and also Junior Class President of last year. I have been involved with student government for four years, and I have also been a part of National Honor Society and FBLA. I have won state competitions at FBLA in banking and financial systems at second place in the whole Pinellas County. I am also the co-founder of Northeast First Asian Student Association, which brings lights to Asian communities and Asian culture. I have grown very close to many peers, teachers, and staff members over the years, and I genuinely don't think I could have chosen a better high school. Northeast has provided me countless opportunities to grow academically, mentally, and I've engaged in both financial literacy courses and Academy of Finance and advanced placement courses. After graduation, I plan on studying international business and marketing and, uh, by business at the University of California, Los Angeles. Once again, I am extremely grateful for the impact I've been able to make on Northeast and the help and support everyone has provided along the way. It is my pleasure to share with you some great academic achievements at Northeast that help the vision of 100% student success. The class of 2023 posted a 94% graduation rate. Northeast has maintained a 90% or better graduation rate over the past seven years. Students annually complete more than 10,000 volunteer hours to qualify for Florida's Bright Future Scholarships. Our automotive and culinary programs both have established partnerships with Pinellas Technical College to offer dual-romant opportunities on our campus. Twenty varsity teams have qualified for FHSSAA Academic Recognition, earning a minimum of 3.0 GPA. Boys bowling and girls golf were awarded FHSSAA State Academic Team Competitions and champions for their teams having the highest GPA in the state of Florida. In 2023, our boy soccer team were district runner-ups. We had state qualifiers in swimming, diving, golf, cross-country, bowling, football, and track and field. We had regional title championships in men's track and women's wrestling. Our performing arts scholars have earned superior and excellent ratings in competitions, while art students have had their work displayed in Dali Museum and Dunedin Fine Arts Center. Our chess team continues to flourish with matches around our country, county, and world, including Harvard students, teams in South Africa, Argentina, and Great Britain. Thank you. I will now turn over to Micah Jimenez to share points of pride.
Good evening. I hope you all are doing well. My name is Micah Jimenez, and I have had the honor of attending Northeast High School for the past three years. And I can say transferring to Northeast was a decision I will not regret. Throughout the time of attending, I have found myself a part of several leadership roles, such as student government, junior vice president, and now senior class president. I have had the opportunity to be a part of several other extracurriculars, as well as maintaining all As in a grade point average of 4.3. I plan on going to UCF to study forensics in hopes to be a forensic pathologist. If it weren't for the possibilities granted to me, I would not be the person I am today. I owe the vast majority of my success to my teachers, administrations, and peers. They have always encouraged and believed in me, and for that, I am proud to be a fellow Viking. Northeast is a national demonstration avid school, placing it in the top 1% of over 5,000 schools that offer avid nationwide. Avid systems of college readiness prepare students in the academic middle for college and ensures a school-wide college-going culture. The Academy of Finance, AOF, is one of just four programs nationwide to earn Model Academy status 16 years in a row from the National Academy Foundation. AOF will be nominated for the 17th straight year for this award. AOF is one of Pinellas County's Programs of Distinction, the highest honor possible for academies. Students competing in Future Business Leaderships, Leaders of America, Skills USA, National Scholastics, Art, and Multiple Performing Arts Organizations have won titles through academic competitions. Local businesses annually support Northeast with over 20,000 volunteer hours. This includes partnerships with the Chiva Credit Union, Dell, Pinellas Technical College, and Raymond James, to name a few. 124 FELI students qualified for state competitions and four students qualified for national competition. Our school has spirit, a positive culture, and pride. Northeast has been recognized by the state of Florida as a bronze and gold level winner of PBIS model schools. We believe all students can succeed with the three As: outstanding attendance, a positive attitude, and a hunger for achievement. As Vikings, we build strong ships. Scholarships, relationships, leaderships, partnerships, citizenships, and sportmanship are embedded in all that we do. Once a Viking, always a Viking. We thank you for your leadership and support.
Thank you. Wonderful presentation. Wonderful job, ladies. Thank you so much for being here. And we also want to thank Principal Hernandez for joining us this evening. Thank you so much. With that, we're going to move to the amendments to the agenda. Mr. Hendrick, are there any recommended amendments to the agenda this evening?
Madam Chair, there are no amendments this evening.
With seeing no amendments, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda? The motion by Mrs. Myers and a second by Mrs. Cook. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. The motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. As we begin our agenda for this evening, I want to make sure the public is aware we have a time-certain public hearing on the budget at 6:30 PM. This means if we are not finished with our regular business meeting at 6:30, we will recess this meeting, open the public hearing on the budget, and once the hearing is concluded, we'll return to our regular business meeting at that time. And moving forward, on our special order of agenda this evening, can I have a motion to approve item 4.1, the presentation of the proclamation designating September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month? I have a motion by Mrs. Long and a second by Ms. Edmund. Mr. Hendrick, could you please introduce the item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're excited to have this proclamation that spans two months. And to tell us a little bit more about the proclamation and the work that we do to support it in Pinellas County Schools is our K through eight Social Studies Specialist, Michelle Anderson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members, Mr. Hendrick and staff. Each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. The observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. It was enacted into law on August 17th, 1988. President George H.W. Bush issued the first proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month on September 14th, 1989. The day of September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and September 18th, respectively. Also, Columbus Day, or Dia de la Rosa, which is October 12th, falls within this 30-day period. Within Pinellas County Schools, 18% of our student body and 8.6% of our staff identifies having Hispanic and Latino heritage. Pinellas County Schools celebrates the vibrant diversity of our community and supports and promotes Hispanic Heritage Month. Our teachers have received curriculum support through a variety of means. We look forward to seeing our schools' cultures grow in support of all ethnic groups as they highlight the contributions and achievements of our Hispanic and Latino countrymen and women. Thank you for your support of this annual event.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Cook, could you read the proclamation?
Proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2023. Whereas our nation has drawn strength from the diversity of our people with faith and passion, a sturdy work ethic, and profound devotion to family, Hispanics have carried forward our legacy as a vibrant beacon of opportunity for all. Whether their ancestors have been here for generations or they are among the newest members of the American family, they represent many countries and cultures, each adding their own distinct and dynamic perspective to our country's story. In celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month, we honor the contributions Hispanics, the contributions Hispanics have made throughout our history, and we highlight an important part of the rich diversity that keeps our communities strong. And whereas this month, let us reflect on the countless ways in which Hispanics have contributed to our nation's success, and let us reaffirm our commitment to expanding opportunities and building an ever-brighter future for all. Let us embrace the diversity that strengthens us and continue striving to ensure the American dream is within reach for all generations of Hispanics to come. And whereas Congress has authorized and requested the President to issue annually a proclamation designating September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now therefore, the Pinellas County School Board does hereby recognize September 15th through October 15th, 2023 as Hispanic Heritage Month and urge all citizens to join in national effort to recognize the contributions made and the important presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States and celebrate their heritage and culture. Signed this 12th day of September, 2023.
So any discussion from the board members? We have a motion on the floor to approve item 4.1, the proclamation designating September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. The motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Next, as we move forward, may I have a motion to approve item 4.2, a presentation of the proclamation designating the month of September 23 as American Founders Month, September 17th as Constitution Day, September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and the last full week of September as Celebrate Freedom Week. I have a motion for approval by Mrs. Heine and a second by Mrs. Peters. Mr. Hendrick, could you introduce the item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're excited to bring this forward and sort of all four items together as one proclamation. And to give us more information about how we celebrate these in our schools is Matt Bloom, our nine-through-12 Social Studies Specialist. Matt?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members, Mr. Hendrick and staff. The month of September has many commemorations nationally. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that yesterday was 9/11 Heroes Day, where we remembered the unimaginable loss from the terrorist attacks in 2001 and how America was uplifted and united by the acts of heroism and bravery that followed. Today, I'm here to share Pinellas County Schools' proud support of American Founders Month during the month of September, Celebrate Freedom Week in Florida during the last full week in September, and Constitution Day on September 17th, which kicks off Constitution Week each year. The celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution in 1955. The DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th to the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. That resolution was later adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Florida was actually one of the first states in the country to officially recognize Celebrate Freedom Week in Florida in 2002. While social studies teachers guide students through in-depth lessons throughout the year on the founding of our country, this month, day, and week serves as a special time where we can continue to educate our students and community about the sacrifices made for freedom in the founding of this country and the principles on which this country was founded. I always try and bring an acknowledgement of our district's work connected to civics education at this time. And so this afternoon, I wanted to celebrate Pinellas and the wonderful educators in our county, specifically around the State Civic Seal of Excellence course. The Florida Department of Education designed and developed the content of this first-of-its-kind teacher training program that aligns with Florida's revised civics and government academic standards and equips teachers with the knowledge and skills to provide high-quality civics instruction. To date, Pinellas actually ranks fifth in the entire state among all school districts and local education agencies in completions of this roughly 55-hour-long course, with 991 of our certified educators finishing so far. We were 40 behind the next, behind fourth place, so we're going to get there. As we commemorate Constitution Day and celebrate Freedom Week, I'm excited about a new area of focus to have schools, which is to have schools become Purple Star Schools of Distinction through the Florida Department of Education. The purpose of the Purple Star School of Distinction designation is to recognize schools that support the unique needs of military families, help military-connected students navigate critical challenges, and provide resources for military-connected students when they transition to a new school environment. I'm honored to share that Northeast High School, under the leadership of Mr. Hernandez, is finishing up its application to be considered for the Purple Star School of Distinction. With state approval, Northeast High School will become our first Purple Star School in Pinellas. The application period closes at the end of this month, and we will hear back later this semester on the awarding of the Purple Star designation. One last thing, we've also provided our teachers with over 8,700 pocket constitutions to date so far this year for use with their students directly in our civics and government courses in middle and high school. I'm going to add seven to that. I gave earlier Ms. Hauck a pocket constitution for each of our board members to carry with you. And I thank you for your support of these annual events and our efforts to enhance services for our military-connected students and families and in honor of our great country. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bloom. And Ms. Peters, could you please read the proclamation?
Thank you. American Founders Month, Constitution Day, and Week, and Celebrate Freedom Week, 2023. Whereas during American Founders Month, Constitution Day, and Week, and Celebrate Freedom Week, we focus on better understanding the nation's founding fathers and the sacrifices made for freedom that hold a special place in the history of the United States of America and the state of Florida. And whereas during the month of September, all civic, fraternal, and religious organizations, as well as public and private educational institutions, are urged to recognize and observe American Founders Month, Constitution Day, and Week, and Celebrate Freedom Week through appropriate programs, services, celebrations in which state, county, and local governmental officials are invited to participate. And whereas during American Founders Month, schools at all grade levels are encouraged to dive deeply into the history of our nation's founding fathers and the intent, meaning, purpose, and importance of America's founding documents. And whereas, the school district continues to honor its veterans through various commemorations and celebrations and coordinates with our armed forces to offer robust junior ROTC programs across the district and will establish Purple Star Schools of Distinction to support the unique needs of our military family and military-connected students. Now therefore, the School Board of Pinellas County does hereby proclaim September 2023 as American Founders Month, Constitution Day, September 17th, and Constitution Week, September 17th through September 23rd, and the last full week of September as Celebrate Freedom Week. Signed this 12th day of September, 2023.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peters. Is there any discussion from the board? Being done, we have a motion on the floor to approve item 4.2, presentation of the proclamation designating the month of September 2023 as American Found- as American Founders' Month, September seventeenth as Constitution Day, and September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week, and the last full week of September as Celebrate Freedom Week. All in favor of this proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, and therefore it passes unanimously seven to zero. Yeah. Thank you. Members of the public have three separate opportunities to address the board when we gather for our business meeting. The first is public comment on our agenda items, the second is public hearings, most of which are policies, and the last is after our meeting when speakers may address general business of our district. At each opportunity for public input, board members are here to listen to each of you. This is not a time for interaction, but the board will take your comments into consideration before it votes on the agenda items. The board is committed to standard of civility and decorum in conducting our meetings. This includes refraining from clapping or making audible noises during or after a speaker's comments, respect for their time, and we appreciate you assisting us in maintaining a civil and constructive environment. Lastly, please note that this meeting and all public comments will be broadcast live on the Internet, and the video will be publicly archived. Members of the public may always communicate with the board through our email address, board@pcsb.org, or by calling the board office at five-eight-eight-six-three-zero-zero. Mrs. Hauck, are there any speakers to agenda items this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members, and Mr. Hendrick, we have four speakers for agenda items this evening. The first two are Ms. Angela Taylor Sweet and Mr. Mark Clutho.
Thank you.
Ms. Sweet is speaking to item seven-point-two, Mr. Clutho is speaking to item seven-point-seven, and eight-point-three.
Okay. We're doing the podium. Where's the podium?
I can speak.
Yep, you sure may.
Let's go.
Here's the microphone.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Thank you. It's my absolute pleasure being here with you this evening, and I believe the agenda item is talking about personnel. So the educational landscapes has changed due to climate change or global warming and disrupting every strata of society, how and where we work, live, communicate, travel, entertain, and survive together. So therefore, we must be open-minded, really, willing to appreciate this wonderful opportunity to encourage our students to participate in this new digital economy. Well, as teachers, personnel, we must be willing to discover and maximize our potential as facilitators instead of just teachers. As we want to help the students understand their potential as well, the gifts, talents, and abilities, and that align with this new, this next industrial revolution. So what we want to do is, every teacher must be certified in instructional system design because that way they're teaching the students how to operate on the computer, you know, with this digital corruption. A lot of students are out there just doing their thing, they really don't know what they're doing. So the thing is, is the teachers, as facilitators, the parents, the teachers are training how to operate on the Internet, and also participate in this digital economy. So the thing about it is this, unless we invest in digital superior, digital literacy competency for the entire family, the indigent, those traditionally excluded from competitive labor markets, will get lost, will not be able to participate here. So what we're proposing is, digital equity must be a national biodefense strategy to achieve environmental justice for all. So I'm calling this Pinellas County School System, really, the nation, we're going to have the National Educational Consortium to articulate entrepreneurial pedagogy as an official academic discipline.
Ms. Sweet? Ms. Sweet, you have twenty seconds left.
Everybody's in after the war, everybody's, endless possibilities on the world wide web. So we must adjust our educational landscapes to be able to accommodate that, and our children, we all have, climate change is not going away. How do we fix this? Well, let the children participate with environmental, environmental.
Mark Clutho Largo, seven-point-seven, five million four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And you're talking about structural integrity. Oh, boy, if that's not a stretch. Oh, never happened with anything you have built. Never happened. You know, and as I have said many times, we have that old cause and effect. The request approval of the two thousand twenty-three-twenty-six District Strategic Plan. Strategic, a word you should never be using. You have six goals. Two of them I'll mention, learning in a safe environment and effective and efficient use of resources. What a joke. What a joke. You don't know where to put clear-story windows. You don't know how to orient a building correctly. And as I said, there's this thing called cause and effect. So what we have then are these headlines, soon our oceans could feel like Jacuzzis. This woman, ten years ago, swam from Cuba to Florida. She says she couldn't do it today. She'd cook. This headline here says Antarctica's Sea Ice at an Unprecedented Low. Hotter Oceans Push July to Be the Earth's Warmest Month on Record. Hurricane Shatters Weather Rules, stating that these hurricanes are becoming super-strong, super-fast. And today's paper states U.S. Sets Record for Billion-Dollar Weather Disasters. Now see, your strategic plan doesn't get it.
The next two speakers are Renee Chia, speaking to item seven-point-eight, and Lee Bryant, speaking to item eight-point-three.
I would just like to start off by saying very quickly that I think it's pretty telling to be in a room this full of people, and myself and maybe two other people are the only ones clapping for a proclamation for, to celebrate freedom in this great country that we live in, that you all work in, and want to teach children in, even though you clearly hate the nation in which you live. So the item I'd like to speak to is seven-point-eight. I really just have an inquiry, this is a lease agreement for Shirley Proctor-Polar Foundation, and it made me wonder what your policies and procedures are to ensure any vendors that receive public funds adhere to compliance with Florida laws as far as any curriculum or anything else that they're using in that capacity. So I don't know if there's a policy and procedure that you can tell me the number to, that I can look up, or if you can provide that, or if there is not, if you can provide just information on what steps you do take to ensure vendor compliance. That's all I have. Thanks.
Good evening, Chair Kane and School Board, Superintendent Hendrick and staff. As you are voting to request approval of the two thousand twenty-three-twenty-six Strategic Plan, excuse me, I'm Lee Bryant, president of PCTA. I'd like to acknowledge the work that the PCTA and their members put into working on this strategic plan, including our former president, Ms. Nancy Velardi, who's here tonight. Our PCTA polled our members, and we worked to develop a strategic plan. We presented it to the county, and we're very, very happy to see how much they aligned. The strategic plan from the county and the PCTA strategic plan that we plan on pushing forward for our next few years are very, very well-aligned, and that shows a little bit more and more of the partnership that we are developing and working together. We are coming together as a team to work for the better education for our students and a better learning environment and teaching environment for our teachers. To go back to our simple little saying from the union this year, alone we can do so little, together we can do so much, and that includes you and us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no more speakers for agenda items.
Thank you very much. And seeing on the agenda, we have no unfinished business, we're moving to our consent agenda. So may I have an adoption, or may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mrs. Heinz.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Edman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion to adopt the consent agenda passes unanimously seven to zero. On our non-consent, we have a motion to approve item eight-point-one, which is the request approval of the settlement with Altria Group, Inc., and the remaining defendants in the vaping litigation. I have a motion to approve by Mrs. Meyer.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Peters. And Mr. Kupersky, could you please introduce the item?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair, board members, or Mr. Hendrick. This item is the first of two that I'll be presenting to you this evening on the non-consent agenda item. If passed, the first one will end litigation that you're involved in, and the second one would initiate litigation. So starting with eight-point-one, back in April of two thousand twenty, the School Board voted to join nationwide litigation against Juul, Inc., Altria, Inc., and other defendants that produced vaping products. That litigation was joined by about fifteen-hundred school districts nationwide, along with dozens of counties and municipalities, and even some private parties. And then back in February of two thousand twenty-three, I brought to your recommendation to approve a settlement with the primary defendants, the primary defendants being Juul, Inc., and some Juul-related defendants. The School Board approved that settlement, but it did not end the case because there were some secondary defendants that remained in the case that could not reach a settlement or proposed settlement at that time in February. But we have since reached a proposed settlement with all of the plaintiffs that have filed against these defendants in that litigation, and so what you have in front of you tonight is a recommendation to approve the settlement with Altria, Inc., and all the remaining defendants in the vaping litigation. Just to remind you, the Juul litigate, the Juul defendants yielded approximately a net amount of two-point-one-seven million dollars as a recovery for Pinellas County Schools, and the Altria settlement, if approved, would yield about six-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars in settlement. So all told, it would be almost three million dollars as a net recovery. Of course, the gross recovery before the deduction of costs and fees would be closer to four million dollars, but we did enter this litigation on a contingency fee basis, and so we had to contribute our fair share of the attorney's fees, expert costs, and other litigation costs. And so I recommend that we approve this one, just as we did in Juul. This would end this litigation, and then we would seek court approval, just like we did with the Juul settlement, and assuming that that occurs, we would see these funds no later than July first, two thousand twenty-four, in one lump sum. Remember that the Juul settlement proceeds were paid out over four years, and we'll see the first payment before the end of this calendar year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, are there any comments or questions before we take a vote? Ms. Heinz?
Thank you. I think I've said this before in workshop, and I would just say it again, I certainly support receiving this settlement, and just as we move towards using those funds, with the first coming towards the end of the year, that we be strategic about how we use them, and that we use them to combat the same issues that led us to engage in this litigation in April of two thousand twenty. So just to include the board, of course, in that conversation, how we do that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Heinz. We have a, I've seen no other lights, so we are going to move forward with our vote here. We have a motion on the floor to approve item eight-point-one, the request of the approval of the settlement with Altria Group, Inc., and the remaining defendants in vaping litigation. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none opposed, so the motion to approve item eight-point-one, the settlement with Altria Group and remaining defendants in vaping litigation carries unanimously seven to zero. That brings us to our next item, eight-point-two. May I have a motion to approve item eight-point-two, this request to approve to initiate litigation against social media companies and to contract with Meyer Law Firm and Wagstaff and Cartmill. Can I have a motion? I have a movement for approval by Mrs. Heinz. And a second by Mrs. Long, and so I'm going to turn it over to you again, Mr. Kupersky, to introduce this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Hendrick. This item seeks your approval to join a new nationwide litigation that has already been started by some plaintiffs, and this would be against the defendants that are the parent companies of Facebook and Instagram, which is Meta, Inc. It would also be against Instagram, I'm sorry, against Snapchat, which is his own standalone company, TikTok, and their affiliated parents, as well as YouTube's parent, which is Google, Inc. And so the claims in this case would relate to the damages that the School Board has incurred in expending time and money dealing with cyberbullying and other youth mental health issues that have come about by the actions of those companies. And specifically, if approved, we would be alleging in this lawsuit that those companies knew of some of the deleterious effects of their platforms upon youths and did not do anything about it to mitigate it. They have taken some mitigating circumstances and actions lately, but too little, too late, I think, for some of the harm that has occurred in the past. And so you did hear at your June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three workshop, from the attorneys who handled our Juul litigation, John Kiefer from Cartmill, Wagstaff and Cartmill from Kansas City, and Steve Maher from the Maher Law Firm in Orlando, Florida, we would be using the same attorneys that were successful for us in the vaping litigation in this litigation. And just to remind the board and the public again, this is not a class action, but it would involve many hundreds, if not over a thousand, school districts nationwide, each of whom would file an individual lawsuit against these companies, but all of those lawsuits would be filed in one federal court and assigned to one judge, and then that judge would oversee all of those cases, known as multi-district litigation, not quite a class action, but very similar to one. And so using these same attorneys, they took a lead role in the vaping litigation, and having them be in a leadership role in the court, I believe, helped Pinellas County Schools, as well as the other Florida school districts that they represented. So again, once again, with the vaping litigation, this would be brought on a contingent fee basis, meaning that there would be no public funds expended from the School Board or the school district, that any recovery for the attorneys would come out of any settlement or judgment that we would obtain. And so if you look back at the vaping litigation we just concluded, that took about three and a half to four years to reach the point of final resolution, and I think that that would be a good measure stick to judge maybe a potential settlement or judgment in this case as well, certainly multi-year litigation. And if approved, I would work with the attorneys closely, we would get the complaint filed, then they would-- then they would move forward, just as they had in the past. And they would require some data from the school district, and we would work very closely, and I would work with Mr. Hendrick and his staff to collect that information and submit it to our attorneys for submission to the court. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kupersky. Mrs. Heine, you had your request on.
Thank you. Mr. Kupersky, I appreciate you working on that agreement. I read through it. It's thorough. You have had some experience in this at this point, certainly. So thank you. The agreement looks sound. I support our school board signing on to this litigation. And while we've discussed it before, I just wanted to take the opportunity to share a few reasons why. When I was growing up, my mother was worried about Madonna. And when she was growing up, her mother was worried about Elvis. And today, I think most of us parents would give our right arm to just have a radio knob to turn off. There is unregulated, uninhibited content everywhere. And while a K-Troll student only spends 14% of their year in school, and our schools work to limit access to social content, the significant harm done by it, we see that in our schools. We see reduced attention span, reduced cognitive development, or delayed cognitive development, learning impacts, behavior, discipline, physical health, mental health, depression, and certainly the worst that can happen to any family or school family, which is the loss of life either caused by somebody who wants to hurt someone or through self-harm. How do we combat this? It's difficult, and it's prevalent, and it's affecting all of us, and it's certainly affecting our children. Well, certainly school policies and practices for that 14% of time that our students are in school, and that is our area of responsibility, and I know we take that seriously, family and community awareness and advocacy, in helping each other choose healthy habits for ourselves and for our families, and then consumer protection actions that can potentially cease the harm that's being done, such as engaging in this lawsuit. You know, if technology companies and investors created algorithms that protected our youth and invested just a fraction of those dollars in some easy-to-use parental controls that were just kind of a one-shot, you could turn those things on, how many of us spend half our lives running around trying to chase those things? It would be a fraction of the dollars that are invested in technology to make that easy for us and protect our kids. We might be in a very different place. So all of that said, all of us who care deeply about our youth must insist that they do change those practices. And I think that this litigation is just one step towards that. So I support us joining in.
Thank you very much, Ms. Heine. I could not have said it better myself if I had written it out, and I 100% stand with you in that, everything that you said, and what we combat every single day as educators, as parents, and community members, and what we see with our youth. And it is so important, and I think it's an important statement that we have made as a board, that we unanimously moved this forward, and that we're in agreeance, and how important it is to put this as a priority in the protection of our children and our community. So moving us forward, we have a motion on the floor to approve item 8.2, the approval to initiate litigation against social media companies and to contract with the Meyer Law Firm and Wagstaff and Cartmill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none opposed, and so the motion for 8.2 passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Kupersky. Finally, may I have a motion to approve item 8.3, the request approval of our 2023 through 2026 district strategic plan? I have a motion by Mrs. Long.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Cook. Mr. Hendrick, could you please introduce the item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited to bring this item forward tonight for a lot of reasons. It was my goal, when I started as superintendent, to create a district strategic plan that had several years. So we looked at things a little bit more in the long term, and also narrow our focus from the over 100 or so goals in the previous strategic plan to a number that's manageable, that most employees and folks at schools can understand and see clear progress on. And so we've done that with this draft that you have tonight, six strategic priorities, 16 overall goals. And the input to gather there was developed from student achievement, data, and scores, was our listen and learn sessions that we've done now together, over 10 of those in the community, our student leadership summits, getting the voice of our students, the board retreats. This board participated in two full-day retreats to talk about the district strategic plan, as well as, I think, three workshops. I know I'm stealing most of Mrs. Eisen's talking points, but it's important because we want this district strategic plan to really set the direction for where we are as a school district. And in addition to those listen and learns, where we had some just for employee groups, we also did other employee group focus areas, including several with PCTA, as was mentioned earlier by Mr. Bryant. And so tonight, those 16 goals, I want to just touch on a couple for the benefit of the public, continue to accelerate those innovating learning experiences. We've talked a lot about the student experience in our schools, and that's a major goal of our board and of mine, expanding early learning opportunities. We've had a lot of success in that area, and we want to continue to push that. Accelerate the progress of our district's bridging the gap plan. Attract and retain outstanding faculty and staff members. Successfully transition our school district away from S.R. and art funds. This is our last year of those projects, and making sure that we remain fiscally sound as we lose those funds. Increasing operational efficiency for our transportation department. And all of those things leading to our district earning an A grade for the first time. And so our Director of District Strategic Planning is Leanna Eisen, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about the process that I haven't already stolen from her script and the process moving forward. Leanna?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Hendrick, staff and community. Today, we're presenting for approval the 2023 through 2026 district strategic plan. The strategic plan provides the framework and common goals that drive all of our district-wide decision-making, plans, and resource allocation, including the budget. It's ultimately the roadmap for how district offices and schools plan to achieve our vision of 100% student success and our mission to educate and prepare each student for college, career, and life. I'm going to skip telling you how it was informed and developed, because Mr. Hendrick told you all of the stakeholder feedback that we use to inform each of those priorities and objectives. During a series of school board workshops and work sessions, the school board and the district staff collaborated to discuss the themes that emerged from those stakeholder feedback methods and defined the district's strategic priorities and objectives. The strategic priorities and objectives provide district-wide focus for achieving the vision and mission through broad goals for PCS's future. The three-year key results describe the specific measures for what PCS wants to accomplish by 2026, and the key performance indicators demonstrate our ongoing progress toward the objectives and key results. The strategic plan is monitored throughout the year by the district departments, who create and execute cross-functional action plans and monitor and respond to data and feedback to attain each objective. Finally, each school uses the school improvement plans, which are aligned to the district strategic plan, to engage in a continuous improvement and stakeholder feedback process throughout the year. Alignment between the strategic plan and the school improvement plans ensures the entire district is working together to focus on our collective priorities and meet our objectives. Thank you, board, for your support and input throughout the process. We ask for your approval of the 2023 and 2000, through 2026 district strategic plan.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eisen. Is there any comments or discussion from board members? I'd like to, oh, Ms. Cook, go ahead.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank staff. One of the things we're doing tonight is adopting this strategic plan, and the next thing we're going to be doing is the budget hearing. And for us to have the budget that underwrites our strategic plan is a huge piece, and it helps align everything. So I want to thank everybody for the work that has gone into making sure that it is aligned with what we have in our strategic plan.
So a very great point to what we are doing this evening and what is actually happening. And I want to thank you, Ms. Eisen, and thank Mrs. Doll and staff, and all of the board members, because I will say, I think it is one of the most meaningful pieces of work that we do as a board, is putting together, pulling together our differences, pulling together our ideas, and making something that will have a significant impact on student gains and on the educational experience of our district, not only our students, but our staff members and each and every one of our schools. The district strategic plan is really one of my favorite meetings of the year, and I was very excited to be able to come together and do this for a three-year, a length of a three-year, which was a really big change from previous years. And so I want to point out the big change that is there in the document and in all of the work that was put together by staff to do this. And I'm looking forward to seeing how it goes through, as we checkpoint this throughout the next couple of years. But I really want to just say, I would have to gratitude, thank you to all of the board members, because it's been a wonderful discussion with every one of you through these meetings, and also Mr. Hendrick, and Ms. Woodford, and Mrs. Doll and Ms. Eisen. So I really appreciate each and every one of you on putting forth every, all the ideas, all the wonderful ideas for this document. And so, thank you. With that, we have a motion on the floor to approve item 8.3, the approval of our 2023 through 2026 district strategic plan. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. So the motion to approve item 8.3 passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, Superintendent Hendrick, do you have any items this week?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. I want to begin by thanking the staff of our school district for their response in Hurricane Idalia, from administrators who operated schools, to plant operations, maintenance, our food service staff, for just always, once again, in the threat of a hurricane, making sure they take care of their families, but then taking care of the community. I want to also thank Pinellas County Emergency Operations Services for their support and collaboration. We continue with each passing hurricane to get better in how we collaborate, and I appreciate Barry Burton and all of his staff with that. Having said that, we did have historic flooding in some of our neighborhoods. And so it's not as easy as just going back to work the next day as most of our community could do. But for some of our students and families, they'll be suffering the effects of this for a long time. Not to be an alarmist, but six years ago, with Hermann K. and Irma, we evacuated and served 18,000 residents. Last year, with Ian, 5,000 residents. This, a couple weeks ago, just 1,800 evacuated. And so I don't want our community to become desensitized to Pinellas is saved again, but we are here to support our community through that process. I want to thank our board members for supporting and coming up with our Pinellas Legislative Delegation meeting last week. On September 6, we met at Seminole High School with members of our State House and Senate. Great turnout by our legislative delegation, and thanks to the Chair of the delegation, Representative Linda Chaney, for helping to organize the event for Pinellas County. Also want to thank Sheriff Bob Gualtieria for meeting with us and sharing his expertise on school safety. I know that our board members will stay connected with members of our legislative delegation as they begin committee meetings here in the coming weeks, and then finally, the session in January in Tallahassee. As was mentioned earlier by our social studies specialist, Matt Bloom, students across Pinellas County yesterday commemorated 9/11 with moments of silence, participation in community activities, and instruction in grades 6 through 12 as required by the new 9/11 Heroes Day. I want to thank our teachers for ensuring our students understand the importance of this generational event and how it continues to shape our lives today. This weekend, the Pinellas County Council of PTA's annual workshop will occur, and I want to thank the county PTA leadership for their continued support of PTAs at each and every one of our schools, and for the training that they'll provide this weekend. And I look forward to speaking to the hundreds and hundreds of parents in attendance this Saturday. A great award came this week to Eliza Nelson Elementary School, who's been chosen as a 2023 Florida Power Library School, joining six other Pinellas County schools with this distinguished statewide award. The application process is extensive. It involves surveys with families and documentation, featuring how the school library program supports instruction, curriculum, resource management, the administration, environment in the library, and their advocacy for efforts for literacy. The Media Center, if you've ever been to it, Eliza Nelson, is a hub of activity at that school. It's a flexible space for reading, learning, exploration, reverse engineering, a makerspace, robotics lab, a Lego wall, and much more. So congratulations to Principal Adia and Library Media Technology Specialist Rachel Martin. During the hurricane, we had to cancel our Elevating Excellence Night with the State University System, a virtual event, but it's back tomorrow night. So you can log on on our website and hear from admissions advisors to top Florida colleges and universities from across the state university system. All 12 will be represented, as well as many private colleges as well. Again, a link is on our homepage. I want to just remind the board and public that with the new school year, I believe today is maybe day 23 or 24, I've lost count, but the new changes in our code of conduct that the board approved a couple of meetings ago are in place, as well as, not part of the code, but part of our administrative processes, a new district-wide referral form is in place for documenting those office discipline referrals. I want to thank Dr. Heinz for his leadership with his committee, as well as PCTA, who participated in that, and members of the community, our students, staff, and parents who participated in getting us to that point. It's time for our students, juniors and seniors, who are involved in the visual performing and culinary arts, could now apply for Walker's Rising Stars. It comes in May, but the deadline to begin the audition process, both at the school level and then county level, is October 15. See the details on our website. Just a few weeks ago, I had the privilege of attending our countywide graduation, and very proud of our graduates, stretching from 16-year-olds to over 70-year-olds. We celebrated GED graduates, adult high school graduates, and those students who needed a little extra time in the summer to finish that diploma. It was at St. Petersburg High School. We had over 100 graduates, including a 70-year-old grandmother and her grandson, who worked together to complete their high school diplomas. You can check out their story on our district website. And that website features our newest addition for communicating with the public, PCS Together. It highlights in people important events, and important people, alumni, and more in our district, including that story about our recent graduates. You'll also find one about a Dunedin High School graduate who's living her dream as a country music artist, and the expansion of bowling as a sanctioned sport in our school district. In the coming weeks, we have lots of workshops for mentors in our school. We have a full house tonight. I assume you're here to hear more about mentorship and how you can become a mentor in Pinellas County schools. Those workshops are kicking off in the coming days. Check out our website for more information. I mentioned earlier, listen and learn sessions. The board is committed to doing five a year across our district, and there's three new ones coming up in the coming months. September 27 is the next one at Clearwater High School. You can find out more information about that on our website. And finally, honoring a superintendent standout tonight for their demonstration of core values is recognized by other employees across the school district. I'm pleased to recognize Barbara Farmer, the Principal Secretary at Seminole High School for the last 17 years. And a colleague said about Mrs. Farmer, "There are not enough words to express how much I appreciate Barbara Farmer. She's the secretary at Seminole High School. She's always made herself available to answer questions or concerns that I've had as a parent and now a coworker. If she does not know the answer, she'll direct me to someone who does. She's answered calls, emails, texts, in all times of day. She shows a genuine caring, not only for my children, but for all. She listens, acknowledges, and understands, and is always there to help all parents find solutions." Thank you, Mrs. Farmer, for the work you do each and every day, and all of our employees in Pinellas County schools. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Next, do we have any items to be introduced by the school board attorney, Mr. Kupersky?
I have no items. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Any items to be introduced by the school board? Mrs. Heine?
I would just share that I've provided our legislative platform to the Florida School Board Association and spoken with Dr. Thomas up there. She advised that they would be drafting the FSBA legislative platform, and they expect to have that draft for review by the end of October. So I will keep posted on any conversations with them.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Woodford, are there any board requests?
Yes, I noted one request from Ms. Heine. She requested, as a district, we use all funds awarded from the vaping litigation to combat the same issues we're facing in our schools. She also requested that the board be kept updated on such expenditures.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So is there any further business for this meeting? Anything else we need to address? Absolutely. Mrs. Heine?
I just also wanted to say thank you, Mrs. Kane, for the amount of work you put into the legislative committee this year with the school board. In our meeting last week, I thought it was a great, a great success, and I was very, I was very proud of our district and you and our superintendent, of course. So thank you for your leadership with that this year.
Thank you very much. So with that, we're going to adjourn this evening's meeting, and we are going to begin public participation. But before I do that, I want to remind everyone that we do have a time-certain public hearing of the budget at 6:30 PM. This means if we are not finished with public participation, at 6:30, we will recess this meeting and open the public hearing on the budget. Once the hearing is concluded, we will then reopen public participation on the general business of the district. So, and before we perform our board meeting evaluation, we will, we will also adjourn the meeting for public participation. So post that, we will do the board meeting evaluation. So with that, this meeting is officially adjourned. And now on to public comment on the general, general district, general business of the district, so sorry. Please note that the views and comments of the public speakers are their own and not endorsed or sponsored by the school board or district. We cannot ensure the accuracy of the statements made, but will review concerns that are raised and take the appropriate action, which may include clarifications or the referral of our speakers to the proper staff member for assistance. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in conducting our meetings. This includes refraining from clapping or making audible noises during or after a speaker's comments in respect for their time. a speaker's comments in respect for their time. We appreciate you assisting us in maintaining a civil and constructive environment. And additionally, please note that although board members or Superintendent Hendrick may leave the dais briefly, there are speakers in our back room, and we continue to be able to hear all of your comments. Thank you. Mrs. Howt, could you please introduce our public speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Hendrick, we have forty speakers this evening. The first two are Nelly Henias and Brant Robinson.
Buenas noches, good evening. My name is Nelly Henias. I'm the PESPA president, Pinellas Educational Support Professional Association. And I would like to say thank you, Dr., Mr. Hendrick, for appreciation and talking about the secretary's support staff. But let's be real, here in Pinellas County, the inflation is so high, the educational support professionals cannot live under fifteen dollars an hour. We have housing increases, food increases, everything increases, except the salaries. I would say, take considerations to see how the support staff live on fifteen dollars an hour. The minimum person can live here in Pinellas County, for one person, by the search is eighteen dollars an hour. And even with eighteen dollars an hour, we can still not live in Pinellas County. You're talking about shortage, about support staff. That's one of the reasons people are leaving. They can find job in another places and not Pinellas County schools. This is a workplace, this is a perfect place to work, but their salaries is not good. Let's do better. I know, understand we are bargaining, but I know we can do better than that. And I appreciate our support, support staff or ESP. They are suffering here in Pinellas County. Let's be honest. Let me make them a living wage. So, with that, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Hendrick, staff, thank you all so much for the opportunity, as always, to speak. I'm so grateful, and I'm so humbled by the opportunity. So, thank you again. As you know, my name is Brant Robinson. I teach social studies at Dunedin High School. I just started year twenty-seven, and things are off to a wonderful start. And a lot of that has to do with you all and everybody in the room. So, I just want to thank all who are here. I especially want to thank the seven elected members of the school board. You know, I, I potentially vehemently disagree with some of you on many different policy issues, but I appreciate you because what you did is you stepped up and you committed to participatory democracy. And I think most of us in this room will acknowledge that for decades, many of us have not done our part to get involved in participatory democracy, or else our democracy simply would not be in jeopardy as it is now. And I say that because everyone in this room agrees that public schools are the foundation of our democracy. But we also agree, we have to do more to get more parental and guardian involvement. And I say that as a teacher with tremendous respect for our parents and guardians. We have many parents who are single parents. We have many parents and guardians who are grandparents parenting for the second time, parents that work two jobs. We have people doing everything they can to raise their children properly. But I say this because it's critical that as we go forward, as a county and as a school district, we have to agree on one thing. Our public schools have always been open. Our public schools have always been open to parents and guardians. And there are a number of people across our country that are using phrases like parental rights. And parental rights is a hollow, shallow mantra. It's a hollow, shallow mantra that's built on a foundation of lies. And those, those lies are offensive and dangerous because at the heart of those are lies about us, professional educators, people who train, people who went to school, people who dedicate our lives to be public servants. And those lies include indoctrination, or grooming, or sexualizing our students. So, when people talk about parental rights, they're talking about a hollow, shallow mantra that's built on lies that jeopardize the future of our public schools. And again, I say that with tremendous respect. We ought to be talking about how we can do more to engage parents and guardians in our public schools. The fact is, parents and guardians have access to curriculum standards online. They can challenge material they find offensive or concerning. They always have been able to. They can actually access our gradebook online at all times. They can schedule a parent-teacher conference. They can get involved in the PZ, PTSA. They can get involved in the SAC Committee. They can contact us teachers on a regular basis. Our public schools have always been open, and it's really incredibly important that as we go forward, no matter what our political persuasion is, we have to be committed to truth and honesty, because if we're talking about our children, we're talking about really the future of this country. So, I thank you all again for the opportunity. Y'all be well.
The next two speakers are Lee Bryant and Carol Robin, excuse me, Carol Robinson.
Good evening, Chair Kane, members of the board, Superintendent Hendrick and staff. My name is Lee Bryant, and I am the proud president of the fine people in the PCTA. My pronouns are he, him, and his. September twenty-nine marks the beginning of the American Library Association's annual banned book week, commemoration of all the books that have ever been removed from library shelves and classrooms. Politics, religion, sex, witchcraft, people give lots of reasons for wanting to ban books, says Judith Krug of the ALA, but most often, the bannings are about fear. They're not afraid of the book. They're afraid of the ideas, says Krug. The materials that are challenged and banned say something about the human condition. Ah, I'm going to read from my favorite banned book, share a quote. "The works of the roots of the vines, of the trees, must be destroyed to keep up the price."
Mr. Bryant, Mr. Bryant, I'm sorry. When people are reading from literature, I want to make sure that you give the title and author, and if you did, I'm sorry that I missed it.
I was going to do that at the end, but it's
Yeah.
From the Grapes of Wrath by John Steinbeck.
Thank you.
Ah, "The works of the roots of the vines, of the trees, must be destroyed to keep up the price. And this is the saddest, bitterest thing of all. Carloads of oranges dumped underground. The people came from miles to take the fruit, but this could not be. How would they buy oranges at twenty cents a dozen if they could drive out and pick them up? And men with hoses squirt kerosene on the oranges. And they are angry at the crime, angry at the people who have come to take the fruit. A million people hungry, needing the fruit, and kerosene sprayed over the golden mountains. And the smell of the rot fills the country. Burn coffee for fuel in the ships. Burn corn to keep warm. It makes a hot fire. Dump potatoes in the rivers and place guards along the banks to keep the hungry people from fishing them out. Slaughter the pigs and bury them, and let the putrescence drip down into the earth. There is a crime here that goes beyond denunciation. There is a sorrow here. The sweet weeping cannot symbolize. There is a failure here that topples all our success. The fertile earth, the straight tree rows, the sturdy trunks, and the ripe fruit. And the children dying of pellagra must die because a profit cannot be taken from an orange. And the corners must fill out their certificate dyed of malnutrition. Because food must rot, must be forced to rot. The people come with nets to fish for potatoes in the river, and the guards hold them back. They come in rattling cars to pick up the dumped oranges, but the kerosene is sprayed. And they stand still and watch the potatoes float by, listen to the screaming pigs being killed in a ditch and covered with quick lime, watch the mountains of oranges slop down to a putrifying ooze. And in the eyes of the people, there is a failure. And in the eyes of the hungry, there is a growing wrath. In the souls of the people, the grapes of wrath are filling and growing heavy, growing heavy for the vintage. A banned book in America.
Hi, my name is Carol Robinson, school board members, superintendent. I'd like to also address the ongoing book bannings taking place in this state. Books are banned as a result of a small minority, and as researched recently by the Tampa Bay Times, as small as two individuals, objecting to something they don't like. Banning books is a form of censorship that removes books from libraries, school reading lists, or bookstores because individuals or government officials object to their content or ideas. When we ban books, we teach something powerful to our children, that it's okay to stop an idea or viewpoint from being heard when those in power don't agree with it. One of those banned books is The Diary of a Young Girl by Anne Frank. She was later murdered by a Nazi fascist regime. These fascists were also fond of banning and burning books they did not approve of. After the last evening's school board meeting, several speakers were threatened yet again on social media. These bullying tactics are common, and I'm sure will continue, because these, the groups that did this are unable to participate in intelligent debate. But we must not back down from those that seek to destroy public education. As Lieutenant Colonel Alexander Vissman once said, "Don't worry, I will be fine for telling the truth. This is America, and here, right matters."
The next two speakers are Barbara Mellon and Andrea Dort.
Hello, my name is Barbara Mellon. I live in Palm Harbor, and I'm the mom of a third grader in Pinellas County schools. I first want to thank my son's teachers and staff for getting, getting his school year off to a great start. He just started at Eliza Nelson this year, and he loves it. He got to try the garden club yesterday, chess club on Thursday. It's great. But I'm, I'm sure you've already heard, three separate times in the past few months, and three separate requests to dismiss, dismiss three separate lawsuits. Florida's Attorney General has said Florida statutes HB seven and HB fifteen fifty-seven do not apply to school, media centers, and libraries. This means the Pinellas County School District can respect the expertise of our media specialists when choosing books appropriate for our school libraries. With the St. Petersburg Main Library still closed for renovations, with county commissioners threatening to cut the Palm Harbor Library's budget at their budget meeting this past September seventh, and with many students not able to make, to access public libraries, either because they have lack of transportation, they don't have internet at home, or some other reason, it is even more important than ever that you, as a school board, ensure books stay in our libraries for our students to access. Once again, you might at some point hear people reading passages from books out of context and attempt to hide their literary value. And I'll continue to remind you, our children will not just pick up these books, read a little excerpt, and put them back. And I hope when my son gets old enough, he reads Olive Grapes of Wrath, really good book. He's a little young, eight. But Pinellas County already has a controversial materials procedure where our staff review materials in their entirety and allow parents to offer alternative work and instruction. We also have the option for parents to opt their children out of library materials. All parents can do that, did that at the beginning of the year. And I wanted to urge the school board to adopt a similar policy that Pinellas County, or that Hillsborough County has. Basically, if a parent complains about a book, they talk to the principal, the media specialist, and then can fill out an objection form, and that goes through its committee, all of that. But notably, that school board policy says no challenged material may be removed from the curriculum or from a collection of resource materials except by action of the board, and no challenged material may be removed solely because it represents ideas that may be unpopular or offensive to some. Any board action to remove material will be accompanied by a board statement of the reasons for a material. So, please keep these books until they're fully reviewed. And I finally just want to close by saying the same thing that I continue to say. No other parent's parental rights should interfere with my parental rights. My eight-year-old knows this. He knows they're not his mom. And keep the books in schools and trust our teachers and media specialists. They do an amazing job. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Dort, and you know, I work at Clearwater High School, and I live in Clearwater. Working with the PCTA and PESPA and American Federation of Teachers and National Education Association, we have formed alliances with many community organizations. So, I'm just throwing out some ideas, because we are struggling in this county with finding affordable housing. So, one of the things I, I keep coming up with ideas, and I have sent information to one of our councilwomen in Clearwater, but there's, we have alliances, we've had in the past with St. Petersburg, the city of St. Petersburg, finding a way to build houses for employees in Pinellas County. We've got the Heroes Down Payment Assistance nationally that we can use. But I need you guys to start thinking outside the box. We have property that we're not being used right now. I don't, not sure what it's designated for. Is it designated green space, whatever? But I just know that the back of my house, there's this huge gigantic area where the public is using it instead for using motorcycles and riding around on it. And it's right outside, you know, Sandy Lane Elementary School. So, why not instead, that public's, you know, you know, public school's property, why not work with Habitat for Humanity, the city of Clearwater? Find resources, national and local resources, to start funding some of our housing for the staff that needs housing. That's, that would be a draw. We could retain, and we could recruit employees who want to work in this area and try to provide them with affordable housing. I know state legislation, they've come up with great ideas to try to help us with that, but again, it takes time to find that funding and to get it going on. Like, I went ahead and I applied for the Safe Homes and a grant, and to do that, you know, you had to get the wind mitigation, and I'm just waiting for that wind mitigation to see if I can improve on my home. So, there are resources, state, local, national, again, Habitat for Humanity, work with city officials, St. Petersburg, Clearwater. Try to start thinking of our benefits with reaching out, try to find affordable housing. Thank you. Have a good evening.
The next two speakers are Brennan Pickett and Anamar Giada.
Hello. I'm Brennan Pickett, and this is my seventh year teaching in Pinellas County Schools. And with all due respect, I have no personal gripes with anyone here, but I have been having a real hard time lately believing that the people making six figures in this room are driving home every day thinking, you know what, the teachers are doing just fine. At least, I, I hope that's not what's happening. But recently, I've been thinking a lot about my why. I do that a lot on my drive to school. Why do I stay a teacher in a state that doesn't value public education? And yes, I do believe Florida doesn't value public education at all at this point. Maybe this doesn't apply to my esteemed board or my superintendent, but I do feel with a lot of confidence that my state government and a few regulars in this room simply don't care. They don't value public education. They simply want it to crumble into nothing. Good news, though, I've determined recently that my why really hasn't changed a whole lot in the last eight years I've been in education. I mean, I still feel passionate about what I do. I'm still capable and confident in my ability to give the best, my best, each and every day, no matter the circumstances, never taking a day off unless I really have to, making myself mentally and emotionally prepared for all my students' needs, all this while still having the energy to be present in my own life and with my own family. And as corny as it sounds, I do it for the kids, but I feel alone. I feel alienated in between all this hateful noise and dribble being spewed from the mouth of those who've shown time and time again that they don't actually read. These are the same people who would most likely cheer if I decided to give up and leave profession altogether. I find myself living in a state that is currently and openly dismantling the public school system and consistently handing taxpayer money away to CEOs and private religious entities. And I work for a school district, again, with all due respect, that I feel like isn't standing up for its schools. A school district that no longer has to pay fines for violating class size amendments, but thinks it's all right not to meet the state mandated teacher salary minimum. A school district that won't one hundred percent sign on to condemning and rejecting an openly political social studies curriculum from PragerU. A school district located in the heart of the nation's highest inflation rate for the past two years that thinks three point five percent is good enough. How much longer do our schools have before they close? I know at least five teachers in this room right now who would take a better opportunity if it manifested itself. I've seen teachers who I thought would never quit. They jumped ship this year. These are career educators. We need to do better. Pinellas County Schools needs to do better. Otherwise, we're just waiting for the unemployment line. And I'm starting to think, public education won't be around much longer in Florida. And I know we're all smart enough to read the writing on the wall. So, my question is, will we take a stand, and, or will we just watch it all fade away? Thanks.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Anamar Giada. I am reading a message from Ms. Jamie Burns, MBA, a business and tech education teacher in Pinellas County schools who is not able to be here. Prior to my second career as a teacher, my background was in human resources with a focus on recruitment and compensation. I have seen many organizations fail to understand the value they show for their employees as first and foremost their pay and benefits. Consequently, consequently, they lost top talent to other companies and other industries with their translatable skills. This has an exact correlation with what is happening here in Pinellas County. Given the recent higher-than-national-average inflation, teachers from other areas are declining job offers from our board, and our local teachers are moving to access higher-wage jobs to the south or less expensive housing to the north. A mere lack of A mere lack of value for teachers from parents, as they know all too well that their scholars, teachers, are underpaid and therefore undervalued, causes a lack of support for our classrooms. I consistently watched the labor trend data from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, looking at the high-skill, high-wage jobs in our area. Teachers are on the list at number seventy-one out of seventy-five job titles from the 2021 data before the inflation. That doesn't include the overwhelming debt for a four-year degree. According to the list, I could do an eighteen-month certificate program and earn more as a computer network support specialist. Referring again to my experience in human resources, there is a principle of you can't satisfy an employee more, only dissatisfy them less. Across the county, teachers are dissatisfied with their pay and healthcare costs. We can't be more satisfied from the feels we get when a scholar becomes proficient or finally took ownership of their learning or returns to say thank you or visit, although that doesn't happen very often. We can't be more satisfied when we are observed and receive highly effective, knowing we earned it through our own hard work and dedication. The only impact the governing board can have is extrinsic. And if you want to start to decrease the dissatisfers that are forcing our teachers to leave the county and the profession, start with our wallets. According to my yearly budget analysis, my electric bill has increased by sixteen percent since last year and increased sixteen percent the year before that. My car insurance, a Pinellas County base rate, has increased by eleven percent. My grocery bill has increased by twenty percent. My Pinellas County property taxes alone are threatening to increase by 3.5%, and that is used to help pay my own salary. So no, a 3.5% raise will not suffice. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of my position and value to this organization. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, the public speakers. We are going to have a recess of the public meeting to conduct our public hearing, which was scheduled at 6:30. It is now 6:30. This will be held to consider the proposed 2023-2024 millage rates and district budget. And upon completion of the hearing, the board will return to the regular board reading agenda to hear the remainder of the public comments. This time, I would like to take a five-minute, no, five, okay. I would like to take a five-minute recess, just let the board stand up and stretch for a moment before we begin the public hearing. So we will be back in about five minutes. Thank you. Could everyone please take a seat? We're about to reconvene for our public hearing. Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the second of two public hearings for the 2023-2024 budget. We are here tonight to review the proposed property tax rates and budget for the 2023-2024 school year. We're here to hear comments from the public and approve the proposed millage rates and budget. The order of business and actions taken tonight must follow specific directions set forth in the state statute, and we ask for your cooperation as we go through this legally required format. There will be two opportunities for you to speak this evening. First, you may comment on the proposed millage rates. Second, you may comment on the proposed budget. If you wish to speak, you must register separately for each part of the hearing with our staff member at the entrance of the boardroom. On behalf of the school board and superintendent, I thank each of you for taking the time to be here tonight and to share your views with all of us. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. A motion by Mrs. Long. And a second by Mrs. Peters. Mr. Hendrick and staff, would you like to introduce the budget?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I welcome the public to our second and final of two public hearings on the 23-24 millage rates and district budget. I want to thank the board members for their interest and work with staff over the course of the last several months in formulating this work for the 23-24 school year. As you know, this millage rate and the budget are directly tied to our district's strategic plan. And as we consider the millage tonight, one of the things that's in our online version of the millage rate and the plan is a historical perspective going back to 1970 on millage rates in Pinellas County. And tonight's overall rate is the lowest of any of those years since 1970, including the lowest rate for the required local effort. I want to thank our citizens who have supported our local referendum since 2005, which is part of this millage rate to support teacher salaries in Pinellas County Schools. So with that, I'll pass it to Mr. Smith for the introduction of the budget, the millage rate, and his staff to present it to the public and our board.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. And you stole my factoid about the millage rate. Appreciate that. Tonight, this is the second and final public hearing, as mentioned, on the district millage and budget. The format and order of tonight's hearing presentations are prescribed by Chapter 200 Florida statutes and must follow a specific order. The material available at the first public hearing in August provided comparative information relative to the projected fiscal year closeout. The 23-24 fiscal year has been closed, and the actual results are reflected in the second public hearing documents. We are all experiencing the effects of inflation. The district is also subject to those inflationary pressures. We have experienced increases in energy and fuel costs, increased materials and supply costs, as well as increases in maintenance and construction costs. In addition, we will incur increased costs for our employee health insurance, as well as an increase in the required contribution for the Florida retirement system of approximately $9 million this coming year. All of these factors and more present challenges when formulating this budget. We will continue to examine our budget to maximize the effectiveness of the spending decisions we make, as well as to continue to strive to maximize the increase in the salaries of our employees. At this time, Ms. Samantha Chastain, manager of budget F T N cost reporting, will first present the millages, followed by Ms. Lorraine Jordan, executive director of budget, will present the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, Mr. Hendrick, Madam Chair, board members and staff. Truth in Millage, also referred to as TRIM, requires school districts to advertise their proposed budget and millage rates annually. The district's 2023-24 millage is comprised of the general operating millage, which includes the required local effort discretionary and local referendum. The Florida Department of Education determines the maximum state-required local effort millage rate that must be levied by the school board to generate its local share of funding for the district. The local referendum of .5 mil was initially approved by the voters in 2005 and '06 and was approved for the fifth time in 2020-21 for a four-year period. The proposed millage also includes the 1.5 mils for capital outlay. A mil refers to the rate of property tax commonly paid on the assessed value of homes and business properties. A mil equates to $1 of taxes for every $1,000 of taxable property value. The rolled-back rate is the millage rate that would generate the same amount of revenue as last year if applied to the current tax roll after adjusting for new construction. The 2023-24 proposed millage of 5.938 is higher than the rolled-back rate by 10.87%. Pinellas County's gross property tax value of approximately $140 billion is an increase from last year's value by $15.2 billion or 12.2%. The proposed millage rate for 2023-24 of 5.938 represents an overall decrease of .42% when compared to the 2022-23 total millage rate of 5.63. The required local effort millage has decreased by .78%. The property tax revenue comparison reflects an increase in revenue of $83.7 million over last year's proceeds. This is the result of an increase in our property tax value. The required local effort proceeds are increasing by about $43.5 million, and the proposed discretionary millage will generate about $10.9 million more. The referendum will yield an additional $7.3 million, and the capital outlay millage will generate $21.9 million more than last year. Under the proposed rate, the owner of a $200,000 home after the deduction of $25,000 homestead exemption will pay $1,039.15 in school taxes. This averages out to $2.85 per day. The taxable value of property in Pinellas County reflects an increase on average of 12.2% this year, for the year, excuse me. The Florida legislature has set a required local effort, also referred to as RLE, to 3.19, which is a decrease from the prior year's RLE of 3.215. Some homeowners may experience an increase in their school taxes, as demonstrated here, as a result of an increase in property value and not an increase to our levied millage rate. Please note that this example does not consider the benefit of our 3% saver homes cap. The RLE is an appropriated amount set by the FLDOE. The school board must levy this amount in order to receive state funding. It is used for the day-to-day operations such as school staff and utilities. The discretionary millage is used for the general operations of the district and to meet additional costs due to inflation. Local referendum funds are used to recruit and retain quality teachers, preserve reading, art, and music programs, and provide up-to-date textbooks and technology. The capital outlay millage is the district's primary funding source for maintenance, renovations, new construction, and equipment as advertised on July 30th. At this time, I will turn the meeting back to the board chair to allow for a public comment and for the motions necessary to adopt the millage rate.
Thank you very much. First, we have a motion, and a second to adopt the agenda. While those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Now we will move forward with, maybe we have a motion? Or do we need public speakers prior to the motion? Are there any public speakers for Agenda Item Number Five?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members. Mr. Hendrick, we have four speakers for Item Five. The first two are Andrea Dort and Mark Clutho.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Dort. Thank you, Madam Chair, and the school board, Superintendent Hendrick, and staff. The millage rate increase, I just want to support the increase. The millage rate increase is based on the state allowable increases to support the pay for our labor unions increasing. Obviously, I would encourage the increases so PCTA could benefit an average pay increase of 7.3%, which is the average increase of the cost of living locally. So again, I support the highest possible increase of the millage rate because it is tied to our strategic plan, and we need to support an increase in our teacher and support staff's salary and benefit. Thank you.
Mark Clutho Largo, this is a doggone shame. Mark Clutho Largo, this is a doggone shame. Strategic word never should be used here. Capital outlay, $202 million. Oh, that's bad, really bad. Here we have a heat index over 100 degrees. The air conditioning just cranking away. You're wearing coats. Now how ridiculous is that? You know, that means you buy more air conditioning. You know, there can't be rational thinking here. You're not gonna, you're not going to arrive at some kind of smart millage rate when you can't even get the uniform of the day right. I mean, that's pure absurdity. Just listen to it go. You know, in our house, the thermostat is set at 79 degrees. We're not wearing coats. you know, I just heard, you know, you, the teachers want to get better pay? Well, you need, you need to have some rational thinking. But this increase in millage, you know, this is highway robbery. And you're talking about $202 million for capital outlay for more stupid buildings? So the end result is the U.S. sets a record for billion-dollar weather disasters? And hurricane shatters weather rules? That's the results.
The next two speakers are Bronson Ochoff and Sarah Peacock.
Hi, good evening. Happy to be here with you tonight, and I wanted to take another opportunity to talk to you about the tax millage rate. I was here last month, and I'll just really quickly sum up. I talked about, you know, it's an $83 million increase, which is 11.7%. And I also talked about the, excuse me, I talked about the cumulative effect, whereas that was on top of a $72 million increase last year. And so over the last two years, we've increased the taxes by $156 million. And if you divided that evenly among all the residents of Pinellas County, it'd be about $161 per person. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about that because, you know, sometimes the argument is that we, we need the, we need the extra taxes to pay for teacher salaries. And I support teacher salaries, and I think we need to increase them. But I don't think that the data lines up with what our objective is. We're trying to increase the taxes to pay for the teachers, but I don't think it shows up. And the Bible actually tells us that, you know, we have to be faithful with the, you know, one who is faithful with little can be entrusted to be faithful with much. And I don't think so far that we've been faithful with the tax increases that we've asked for versus, you know, what we've asked for previously versus what we're getting now. So I wanted to go back about four years. And in my review of that data, I looked at the taxes back then were about $586 million. That's what we levied four years ago. And so, you know, we're looking at 212 more million to get to where we're at currently at 799. So, but when you look at the teacher salaries, if you were a veteran teacher back four years ago, so you were in service for 10 years, your salary would have been about $48,000. Well, so now if you fast forward to last year, you would have been a 13-year teacher, and your salary would have only been $54,000. So that's only an increase of $6,000 over those four years. That's only a 12.6% increase. So the increases in the taxes aren't lining up with what we're saying that we need to increase the money for. And the cum, I, I don't think we really take into consideration the cumulative effect of these overall tax increases. You know, it's one amount one year, and then you take that amount and the following amount. So if you look at over those four years and you add those individual increases, that's 425 more million, 425 million more dollars now than you were getting four years ago. And I don't think that we have, I don't think that we have a lot to, you know, specifically to show for that. That's a 36% increase. Your teachers are getting 12, so what you're pulling in, you're only giving about a third. We've got to do a better job, keep the taxes lower. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Peacock. I'm also here to talk about millage, and I think that it should be increased to the highest rate that you're able to raise it to at this moment. As you stated, Superintendent Hendricks, the numbers you're considering are historically low, and I'm encouraging you to approve the highest rates possible because we hear over and over again from our faculty and our staff and our parents and our community that the salaries aren't high enough. And every time, we have concerns about having more psychologists and social workers and support staff in schools. We don't have the money for it. And I've met with all the board members except for Stephanie Myers, and everyone except for Stephanie Myers has said that you want to raise salaries as much as you can, but you're limited. Your hands are tied because legislation only allows you to spend certain sums of money. And in the materials you've shared, it says that this money can go to support staff and to cover inflation. So I'm not certain how I can imagine that there is any reason that you wouldn't increase this as much as possible if those are indeed the things you endeavor to do. As to concerns about where the money is going, I mean, it's all out in the sunshine. You can see where every dollar goes, and I don't think anything is getting wasted. If you needed ideas on how to spend extra money, you might find there are 4,600 housing-insecure students in this county. There are almost 400 unaccompanied minors on that list, so you could perhaps consider housing them, along with all the other teachers that are about to lose their homes. So I hope that you do what you all say you want to do. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no more speakers for item five.
Thank you so much. Moving forward, I may have a motion to provide in 5.2, the approval of discretionary local effort millage. Motion. I need a motion first. Are you moving for, okay, I have a movement for approval by Ms. Edmond. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Heim. Ms. Edmond, will you please read 5.2, the approval of the discretionary local effort millage?
I move that the board approve the levying of the discretionary local effort millage of 0.748 mils as part of the total millage to be certified to the property appraiser and Florida Department of Revenue.
Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, oh, Mrs. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Mr. Smith and team for your time and diligence in preparing this budget. I also want to thank you for taking my calls and discussing the millage rate and budget in more detail with me. I think it's important to acknowledge that although the proposal calls for reduction in the millage rate by .42 percentage rate, this proposal actually equates to an increase of $87 million in local revenue for the district compared to last year, which is just shy of an 11% increase in taxes collected from property owners. Due to the rising cost of insurance, which we've heard many speakers talk about tonight, electricity, groceries, gas, many of the families here in Pinellas are already struggling to make ends meet and are having, and having to make difficult choices and cuts in their own personal budgets. According to the Bureau of Statistics and the Consumer Price Index, our county's inflationary rate is somewhere between 5 to 7.5% on average. Our families, residents, teachers, and staff are contending with unprecedented price increases across the board. Everyone is being forced to make, to do more with less and to make difficult choices. And in the best interest of our taxpayers, I believe so should our local governments. Now is not the time to add yet another double-digit increase to the financial burdens already placed on our citizens. While I agree that a revenue neutral or a full rollback scenario is not possible at this time due to our own rising costs in the district, I do think that we can and we should do better than a 10.87% increase in property taxes imposed on our citizens. My preference would be to find some additional budgetary reductions. Absent of that, I am unable to support the current spending budget proposal. However, I am willing to work with staff to identify, and my colleagues, to identify further areas where we can make reasonable revisions, all while continuing to support our teachers, our staff, and our students. Madam Chair.
So any further discussion, the board members? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second for item 5.2, to approve the levying of the discretionary local effort millage of 0.748 mils as part of the total millage to be certified to the property appraiser and Florida Department of Revenue. All who is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
No.
There's one, two opposition. So the motion passes five to two. Next, Mrs. Heim, could you please speak on 5.3, the adoption of the total millage rates?
I move that the board adopt the millage rate of 5.9380 mils to be set and certified to the property appraiser and to the Florida Department of Revenue. The millage rates are as follows: For required local effort, 3.190 mils; for discretionary local effort, 0.748 mils; for local referendum, 0.500 mils; for capital outlay, 1.500 mils; total millage, 5.938 mils. This rate is 10.87% higher than the rolled-back rate.
Thank you very much. And we have a second by Mrs. Cook on moving this agenda item forward. Is there any board discussion on 5.3?
Seeing none, I have a motion and a second to adopt a millage rate of 5.9380 mils to be set and certified to the property appraiser and to the Florida Department of Revenue. The millage rates are as follows: For local, for required local effort, 3.190 mils; for discretionary local effort, 0.748 mils; for local referendum, 0.500 mils; for capital outlay, 1.500 mils; for a total millage of 5.938 mils. This rate is 10.87% higher than the rolled-back rate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
And two, no. The motion to approve item 5.3, adopting the millage rate of 5.9380 mils to be set and certified to the property appraiser and to the Florida Department of Revenue, passes with a vote of five to two.
And at this time, we're going to have Ms. Jordan. Please proceed with the budget presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Gain. This portion of the presentation covers the district's proposed budget for 2023-24. The budget calendar is ongoing throughout the year. During the course of the year, budget updates are provided at board workshops, and monitoring is performed through budget analyses and forecasts. In the spring, we typically have a better idea of what the legislative budget is providing for us, whether we can expect an increase or a decrease of state funds. Budget steering committee meetings are held during this timeframe primarily for capital outlay requests. In July and September, we hold two public hearings regarding the budget and millage. Tonight is the second of those hearings. The first hearing was held on August 1st. Certain parameters guide the building of the budget. We strive to and have been able to maintain a 63-37 ratio. This means at least 63% of all expenses are for direct instruction or in the classroom, and 37% are related to other areas such as instructional support, plan operations, and administration. Ensured, at least two-thirds of all funding goes toward expenditures in the classroom. We're required by statute to maintain a minimum 3% contingency, while district policy states we're to maintain a minimum 5% contingency. This budget maintains our compliance with district policy. We also budget so as to support our core curriculum and strategic directions. The majority of our budget is in our general fund. This year, it is proposed to be nearly $1.1 billion. The second-largest funding source is capital outlay at $343 million. The district's self-insured health fund is anticipated to be approximately $175 million and represents the district's third-largest fund. The total proposed budget for all funds this year is approximately $1.8 billion. Looking at the budget summary for all revenue sources, you see that about 60% of the total budget comes from the general fund. Capital outlay accounts for approximately 19%. The combined total of these two funds comprises nearly 79% of our entire budget. The new year brings several legislative changes. The base student allocation, or B S A, increased to $5,139.73. This is an increase of $552.33, or 12% over last year's B S A. Absent the collapse of certain categoricals, the comparable year-over-year increase to the B S A would be equivalent to $112.62. Statewide, funding increased by $2.3 billion, $75 million to Pinellas, which includes funding related to family empowerment scholarships. Changes in the Florida retirement system contribution rate are projected to increase district expenditures by about $9 million. The teacher salary increase allocation increased $253 million, or $33.8 million, to Pinellas. A $40 million statewide increase has been appropriated for safe schools. The increase to Pinellas is $432,000. A state-funded discretionary supplement of $436 million has been obligated to mitigate the impact of family empowerment scholarship on district's funding. This is a non-recurring funding source. The total operating fund resources are anticipated to be nearly $1.1 billion. Of that, about $634 million comes from local sources, which includes the half-mil referendum. $290 million comes from state sources. The Florida Education Finance Program, or F E F P, is the general fund's primary funding source. The F E F P funding formula uses a combination of state and local resources to fund education. Looking at the operating revenue budget graphically, you'll note that local sources represent about 60% of the total operating budget, and state sources account for approximately 27%. The remaining 13% comes from transfers and fund balance. The operating budget is used to fund the day-to-day operating expenditures of the district. It pays for salaries and benefits, supplies and materials, textbooks, student transportation, utilities, maintenance, and repairs. Viewing the distribution of our operating budget by object, there is little change from previous years. About 58% of our budget is spent on salaries and 22% on benefits. In total, 80% of our operating budget goes towards staffing. Capital outlay funds include revenue from both state and local sources. This fund reflects the revenue and expenditures for construction and renovation of school buildings and grounds. The majority of these funds are generated by the local capital improvement millage, which is set by law and limited at 1.5 mils. These funds may not be used for operating purposes. Rather, they may only be used for capital outlay purposes as advertised. Pico funds are not expected this year for traditional district schools. Additional funds have been provided through certificate of participation, or COPS bonds. The lease purchase financing of capital improvements through the issuance of COPS bonds is a technique frequently utilized by Florida school districts to finance school facilities. Our proposed capital outlay budget is approximately $343 million. This budget reflects $217 million in new revenue and $308 hundred eight million dollars in proposed appropriations. The special revenue budget is comprised of two major categories of federal funds, contracted programs, and food service. The total contracted programs budget is approximately ninety-five million dollars. This budget starts the year off low and builds as the year goes on as we don't recognize the revenue until it is available. Included in this category are the Corona virus, Corona Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act, and the American Rescue Plan Grants. These grants are also referred to as CARES, ESER, and ARP. It's important to note, these grants are limited, non-recurring revenue sources. Food service is a self-sustaining fund as it receives no financial support from the operating fund. Federal reimbursements and local collections are the primary revenue sources. The proposed food service budget is approximately seventy-three million dollars. The debt service fund is used to account for the payment of general long-term debt, principal, and interest. This eight point five million dollar budget represents the debt service for COPS bonds issued by the district in two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-one. Their proposed self-insurance workers' compensation and liability budget of five point five million dollars accounts for the premium revenue and expenditures associated with the district's self-insured workers' compensation and liability insurance programs. The self-insured health fund accounts for the district's premium revenue and claim expenditures with a budget over approximately one hundred seventy-five million dollars. The proposed budget and all supporting documents are on file in the Office of Budget and Resource Allocation. This information can also be found online. At this point, I'll turn the meeting back to the board chair to allow for public comment and the motions necessary to adopt the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Howe, are there any speakers for Agenda Item Six?
Yes, Madam Chair, for Item Six, we have five speakers. The first two are Mark Clutho and Dylan Dames.
Capital outlay, three hundred and forty-three million. But it doesn't say anything like that here. And you noticed that in some obscure publication, probably less than one-tenth of one percent of the population here would ever have noticed that this hearing is happening today? I don't think that's very wise. But, uh, school board, three million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars obscene. And school administration, sixty-four million, six hundred and forty-five thousand. Oh, boy. Facilities acquisition and construction, two hundred million. And I hear the teachers crying, "Give us the money. We need more money." Well, you know, I've said this many meetings before. Winston Churchill, September twelfth, nineteen sixty, we shape our buildings, thereafter, they shape us. Well, see, you're taking all this money. You're budgeting all this money, and you're making these stupid dumb buildings that are belching carbon and burning money. It couldn't possibly go to paying teacher salaries. Now, over twenty years, I've been saying this. High-performance passive solar buildings. And not one teacher has ever said, "Put us and the students in these healthy money safe, money-saving buildings, providing for the future," that you continue to ignore. This budget in a word is malfeasance, ignoring science. Of course, you don't...
Oh, not where it goes, so what do we expect?
Dylan Dames?
Good afternoon, School Board. My name is Dylan Dames. I'm with Faith in Florida. We represent impacted people, unhoused and housed. I work around housing and criminal justice. This is my first time coming to one of these. I'm excited to see all of the work we do forward. I just wanna stand here in solidarity with teachers, unionized and un-unionized that are struggling. I have a friend, Ben Joseph. He has just left his job in public education. He was not nearly making enough money for the kind of harassment that he faced as a trans man from students. I'm sorry. It's my bad. For the kind of harassment he was facing from students, as well as pressure from parents, escalated by some of the same book banning that we were talking about earlier. Ren, I'd pick him up and he'd have a bunch of things fall out of his bag. He's taking work home all the time. He's buying his own organizers, carrying his own supplies into classrooms so that he can make do with the little that he has. And ultimately, I believe that Ren would have stayed, even, even facing the pressure of not earning enough money. I think he would have stayed if it weren't such a tough environment. I think our teachers are facing a lot of social pressure, but then to also not make a livable wage is, it, it multiplies that a lot. So I'm here in solidarity with all the teachers and just wanna let you know, this is not the last you'll be seeing of me. I'm very honored to be in this space and thank you for what you're doing, and I just urge you to keep teacher salaries a priority in all your budget proceedings going forward. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Bronson Odenkopf and Lindsay Blankenbaker.
So I just wanted to take another chance to talk a little bit about the budget aspect of the one point seven-plus-billion-dollar budget. And in the meeting last month, we did, I think it was mentioned that, that that is, that is, it's a large sum, right? It's a, it's a, it's a large budget. And the idea was is to kinda go back and maybe look at the budget and make some recommendations on where we could reduce spending. So unfortunately, I don't have a lot of suggestions, and one of the reasons because what's really hard, the way that the budget is structured, it's really hard because it's structured into different categories, and you'd have to randomly, you know, cut a percentage out of this category, a percentage out of that category. And I don't think that that's a very, you know, I don't think it's a very effective way to just blanket cut across things. You really need to look in-depth at programs and make sure that, you know, the, the programs that we're spending money on are, are what we want to. There's, there's two ways that you can kinda go shopping, if you, if you wanna use a grocery store metaphor. You can go through and get all the stuff that you want and pile it all in the cart. And if you're the government, then you can just take that price tag and you can put it on to the taxpayer's shoulder for them to carry. But a lot of families have to kinda do it the opposite way. You don't get to get everything in your cart that you want. You have a limit on what you can spend, and so you have to put some, to side some good things because you really wanna focus on the great things. And I think that's really kinda what we need our focus to be. Now, I don't have any solutions, but I don't like to come and look at a problem without maybe offering some ideas, so I wanted to maybe make three suggestions on where we could focus. I think the first thing that we need to do is ask more questions. We need to know, what is the lowest amount of tax that we could charge? Like, what's the lowest amount that we could get a buy and still, still match funds, right? We look at 401K, you match what your employer can give you. What could we match from the state? What's that lowest amount? And then maybe what, what can we look at to stay under that spending amount? I think a finance advisory board would be a great idea for, for the school board to get the, to get the ideas from other citizens who are actually, you know, can, and have good ideas and, and solutions. You know, three minutes just doesn't really give you a lot to talk about, and you don't really have the resources to dive in to really come up with ideas. And then take a look at that strategic plan. We adopted a strategic plan today. It'd be, it'd be great to see what all those objectives cost and then see if you really wanna spend that money for that objective. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Blankenbaker and the Executive Director of P C T A and P S P A. To start, I'd like to state that my forthcoming comments are all made out of respect. I wanna praise the thoughtfulness and the diligence with which this budget is developed or has been developed. It's complex. A budget, any, any budget is, but certainly a budget this large is complex to predict, to monitor, and towards the end, to reconcile. I respect the work of, of our leadership and our staff in the Finance Department. Contract negotiations are also complex, and I encourage you, even though I, I have heard or certainly get the sense that you've been told that you should not, you should. You should be watching our bargaining sessions, watch the live streams, look at those discussions. They themselves are complex. And in both, in both processes, care is paramount. Conservation is part of that. Certainly, we acknowledge it. School board policy, as the finance staff discussed, is to maintain a, a general fund reserve or contingency of five percent. That is nearly two times the state requirement. Again, that's not required by law. That is the school board policy, and it's understandable. But to that end, the district has allocated or budgeted ten percent to the general fund reserve over the last several years, and respectfully. Policy is only as good as it is practical. It's only as good as it is responsive to the realities that we all live and work with now. That reality has our educators, our teachers, and our support staff coping with over seven percent inflation rate locally, specific to Pinellas. That is higher than almost anywhere else in the state or even in the country, and it's compounding over ten percent inflation in our area last year. That has led to a rise in homelessness or housing instability, food instability, and that's driving educators out of our community and out of our schools. But their reality is, has to be your reality. Their shortage has to be your shortage. It's your contingency. This is the contingency that we've been planning for. You and your priorities and your choices must change this if we are to keep our schools great. Our Pinellas County Schools budget should reflect a move away from holding too tightly or hoarding funds and towards valuing and keeping our educators. Again, respectfully, today, we should free the reserve, think creatively versus conservatively about our budgeting policies and practices, our capital borrowing and transfers versus, and, and direct those funds towards keeping our edu, educators in our schools. Our budget should not be a piggy bank, but it should be an exercise in your prioritize, priorities. Please prioritize your people. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Peacock.
I'm not done yet. I'm glad that the people that I disagree with about the budget are here. I think it's important to have this discussion, and I'm glad that you're showing up, even if I don't agree with you. But I do disagree with you, especially in your characterization of the budget. Not you personally, but it's what I hear a lot when I hear about government budgets. The government's not like your family, and it's not like your business. As a society, we have needs. We need an educated electorate. It is this board's job to figure out how much money you need to achieve that, and then it's our job as a group, as a community, as a society, to raise that amount of money. Education is the bedrock of our democracy, and we don't have a teacher shortage, we have a salary and wage shortage. Teachers and support staff deserve to live comfortably and have access to robust, robust medical insurance, and our teachers should not have to buy their own materials. Our administration should not have to beg for support staff. It's your job to provide those things. So it's not a matter of going to a grocery store and picking out all the things we like. It's a matter of, we need those things, we're already not getting them, so it is your job to raise that money and give it to the people who need it to have the next generation be able to function in this society because they are currently handicapped. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no more speakers.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for Item six point two, the approval of the final budget for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four?
I move that the board approve the final twenty-three, twenty-four budget as presented.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Edmund. So any board discussion on six point two? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mrs. Long and a second by Ms. Edmund to adopt the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
One opposition. So the motion to approve Item six point two, approval of the final budget for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, passes six to one. Thank you. May I have a motion for Item six point three, adoption of the resolution determining revenues and millages levied?
Madam Chair, I move that the board adopt the required resolution as presented without formal reading.
I've moved by Mrs. Peters. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Cook. Is there any discussion on Item six point three? Seeing none, I have a motion, a second, to adopt Item six point three, the adoption of resolution determining revenues and millages levied. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One, no. The motion to approve six point three, adoption of resolution determining revenues and millages levied, passes six to one. Thank you very much. There being no additional business regarding the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four millages and budget, I adjourn this meeting of the public hearing on the budget. We will now reconvene with the public participation portion of our regularly, regularly scheduled school board meeting. Mrs. Howe, can you please introduce any additional speakers?
The next two speakers are Karen Baldino and Philip Bel Castro.
My name is Karen Baldino, and I teach kindergarten out of school in Clearwater, Skycrest Elementary. At first, I wanted to read a great picture book, but there are too many to choose from. Then I wanted to read an inspirational poem about teachers, but again, I could not decide on one. Instead, I would like to ask you to stop and take a moment to think, really think. What do you remember about your time in school? Do you remember the scores or grades you received? Do you remember the assignments your teachers gave? More than likely, the memories are not about academics or test scores. Most likely, the memories are of the people, the teachers, the nurses, the people in the cafeteria, the front office, the bus drivers. I bet the memories are about the relationships built, the encouragement received. Knowing, no teaching is so much more than what is in the textbook, so much more than what is on the lesson plans. It is the look on the student's face when they realize they can write their name by themselves, or they can read that word, or the book. They can count, add, subtract, multiply, or divide. Show the teachers they are valued and they are needed. Teachers should know they are loved, teachers are important, that they are important. They should know that they, or actually, you should know that they make a difference every day. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. I wanna speak on the most important issues your teachers are facing. People come here and speak passionately about books, bathrooms, and buildings, but I'd like to focus instead on budget, bargaining, and brain drain. Pinellas County Schools is either knowingly or unknowingly wasting money on disposable multi-volume textbooks designed to be thrown away every year, and expensive contracts with multiple online programs that all do nearly the exact same thing. We're wasting money on Focus and Canvas, which is used by Florida's universities but do the same thing. We're wasting money on Common Lit, Albert I O, Study Sync, ThinkCirca, which all function similarly, and track student data. Here is a seven-page-long student success best benchmark tracker. This came to E L A teachers from the district with no instruction... This came to ELA teachers from the district with no instructions on how to use it or what it is for. I'm giving this to you in the hopes that maybe you can tell me what it is and how to use it. Am I supposed to print and fill one of these out for every student? Are you expecting students to teach themselves the standards for when all of their teachers quit? What is being tracked here and for what purpose? We have so much data on students, a self-reported piece of paper has no functional value even if we had time for it. Please do not tell me the person who made this was ever a teacher and if you tell me their salary, I might throw up. Recently, PCTA and PCS sat at the bargaining table. I was there, I'll be there again tomorrow and I encourage everyone to come. The district offered teachers a 3.5% average raise, not even meeting half the rate of inflation. A 3.5% raise for me looks like an extra $1,834 in my pocket annually. I recently moved 30 minutes away and now split rent with my partner, another teacher in Hillsborough County. If you subtract the money I now spend in gas just to commute, a 3.5% raise gives me $896 before taxes. Thanks, but no thanks. My partner teaches AP art. She has a master's degree in her field, has produced national award-winning artists and coaches extracurricular sports. We are both actively looking to leave Florida. Simply put, you cannot afford us. The school district isn't immune to inflation. Young, dedicated, passionate professionals like us are out of your price range. You cannot afford us. Tomorrow night, when you come to the bargaining table and you're surrounded by teachers, know that we all have a choice. Audit your budget again. Look at how much money you're wasting on disposable textbooks, how much money you're wasting on contracts with companies that make similar products, how much money you're wasting on administrators that spend their days telling teachers how to do their jobs with whatever a benchmark tracker is supposed to be. Your teachers are leaving. You cannot afford us. Lastly, I recently visited Clearwater High and Mark Clutho is right. That is a dumb, stupid building. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Laura McCullough and Gisela Benny.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Mr. Kendrick Board, thank you so much. I just want to make a couple of comments and I forgot them because I'm so tired. It was just interesting that a group of people call themselves Moms for Liberty when their only sole goal is to prevent other people's liberties. It's a brilliant marketing device. It's brilliant. I also want to commend them because the sales of the banned books have gone up. People at the library are, the staff at the library are saying that the, these books are being taken out by people of all ages, not just school students, but people of all ages. It's like, what are they complaining about? And people want to know. So, you know, the opposite happened, the opposite effect that they wished happened, happened. And I just want to note, you know, the ROTC was here. We're giving guns to 14 and 15-year-old kids that come in here with a show of force. To me, it's intimidating. I do, of course, I appreciate the military and I know that we have to have it. I don't know that it's important to have in the schools. There's no opposite Department of Peace. There's nothing else for us to go to. We have a show of force and we have nothing. And I think that's, shows us where we are today. We're arguing with each other instead of saying, okay, if you don't want to read the book, don't read the book. That's all there is to it. And instead of arguing and spending all this time, we could be doing something more productive if we had learned how to communicate better and how to get along with other people, if we had a Department of Peace, if we could do that instead of arguing about who can read what. It's ridiculous and a spent time, it's a terrible spend of time. We could be doing other things. Thank you so much.
The next two speakers are Nancy Velardi and Alicia Santana.
Good evening. Lately, I've been thinking a lot about the many years I negotiated at the bargaining table with my colleagues under the direction of three PCTA presidents who preceded my term, Michelle Denard, Kim Black and Mike Gandolfo. For 20 years, I sat opposite many different representatives from the district, some honestly interested in improving the working conditions, like our current superintendent, and some whose entire goal was to deny workers' rights. A contract is put into place to fairly outline those rights, benefits and restrictions of both the employee and the management. Every single article in our contract was hard fought through hours of debate, discussion and ultimately compromise, culminating in one of the strongest, fairest contracts in the state of Florida. This contract is so well-established that many employees don't even realize that it provides some of their basic benefits. They incorrectly assume that management provided those out of kindness. For example, the 80/20 split on health insurance. That's in the contract. And since I've been at the table for years, I know that management has long been trying to change, to charge the employee a much higher percentage. Unsuspecting employees' paychecks will be lower if the contract disappears and management is left to its own devices. You all should be watching the screened bargaining sessions to see what is said there. Every employee, every board member. If you wish to retain your employees and show them that they are valued, the contract needs to stay in place and be honored. This year, management won't even discuss working conditions, which has never happened before. They refuse to put in the time required to address the many changes to our profession. You cannot claim to value your employees and then refuse to enter into a discussion about improvement to their working conditions, which costs you nothing. You can't claim to be limited on funds to provide a decent raise and then refuse to make it up by easing their workloads. You can't deny the teacher shortage and then overload the classrooms. Your employees are still leaving this profession every day. Hundreds of hours were spent to craft a document to protect and care for your employees. When I think that they may lose those hard-won protections and be denied a relevant raise like other districts, it breaks my heart. All that work for nothing. Your employees deserve better. Keep the contract and prove that you care for them.
Alicia Santana. The next two speakers are Ginger Bringle and Lindy Lindsey.
Tonight, I am speaking to you as a Pinellas County taxpayer, not as a district employee because I left my position last month. After 22 years, I no longer felt valued by this district. Now, we hear a lot about staff appreciation and recognition, which are great things. I always felt appreciated by my school-based administration and my colleagues, but they didn't have any control over the value that this district places on its employees. I was appreciated, but my work of three people wasn't valued. There is a difference. Did you know that no one from the district, other than our avid and library teams, reached out to me when I gave notice? Guess what I did get from the district, though? An email stating that you were taking $75 away from me because I only mentored a late-hired librarian for 15 weeks instead of the full 18 weeks. I can live without $75, but do you think I felt valued when I read that? Do you have any idea how many hours I mentored new teachers and librarians over the last 20 years without asking for a dime? You appreciated that, didn't you? Did you know that there hasn't been an exit interview? Did you know that I can't even seem to get a copy of my last pay stub? You know, to see if you really took the $75? I have no idea. Certainly not feeling valued. I am currently in a new position where I get to be the one thing I have wanted to be since kindergarten. I am a librarian. A dream that this district tried to steal from me and 100 other LMTs by turning us into laptop lackeys and test proctors. My new organization values its employees. Next month, our annual raise will be a 6% increase across the board. 6%. Their rationale for such a generous increase is that they recognize the value of their employees and they wish to retain them for as long as possible. Their words, not mine. They understand that while moments of recognition are important, they don't pay the bills and that no amount of appreciation will retain an employee who no longer feels valued. And I know you're probably thinking, well, they don't have the number of employees we have, but remember, they also don't have anywhere near the funds you have, especially your ginormous reserves. It's time for salary negotiations and once again, this district offers its appreciated employees a raise so low, it will be eaten by the increases in health insurance and the rising cost of living in this state. It is an insult to your employees and proof that you do not value them or the work that they do. You may appreciate them, but if you care about retaining them, prove it. Please, put your money where your mouth is and prove that you value your people. Thank you.
Lindy Lindsey. The next two speakers are Sharon Hampson and Vivian Posey.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Sharon Hampson. It's my first time ever speaking, so I'm a little nervous. But I had everything planned out and then sitting in this room, I'm just, oh, my heart breaks. I am one of the teachers that left due to lack of funds. I left the passion that I love, the students, everything that meant the world to me. It's not too late to save the rest of your teachers. Okay. I taught here for almost 20 years. I taught as far south as Lakewood Elementary, as far north as Ozona and just about everywhere in the middle. Here's what I've learned. I have learned that students are the same everywhere. I have learned that in 20 years, all students operate on the Maslow's hierarchy of needs, meaning if their basic needs aren't met, you cannot teach them anything at all. And until those needs are met, they won't learn anything. The lower levels of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, are they fed? Do they feel safe? Do they feel loved? And do they feel respected? And I will tell you, you're about to run into a huge problem with your students. Because when you do things like ban books with color, with students of color in them or people of color in them, you're telling the students of color in the classrooms that they don't matter. And I can tell you, some of the best works of literature have been taken off your shelves. Things like Ruby Bridges, The Other Side, Number of the Stars, everything you can possibly imagine that all those students relate to. Those things that make a student feel seen and heard and loved. They won't, they won't get that from the school system, which means you won't get what you want, which is of course, success in your classroom. You won't get the test scores you want because those students won't feel seen or heard or loved and they will stay at the lower levels. So just to say, to quote the great author Maya Angelou, "When we know better, we need to do better."
Vivian Posey. The next two speakers are Abby Odell and Anthony Avila.
Hello, my name is Anthony Avila. I use the them pronouns and I am a community organizer with Equality Florida. And I came here tonight, first of all, to stand in solidarity with the teachers. At Equality Florida, we, part of our demands for school boards like yours is that you provide ample opportunity for local unions to be able to actively recruit and support their members. And in, in doing that, we ask you to provide clear and strong guidance to support LGBTQ students so that your teachers and support staff and administration know how to create supportive environments and protective environments for every student and respectful environments for every family. We are asking that you stop the banning of books by providing thoughtful and thorough and clear procedures for how to challenge materials and resources without amplifying bigotry. We are asking that you refuse to utilize clearly political tools like PragerU in Curricula and to develop lessons. And we finally are asking that you adopt a collective letter and send that to the State Board of Education, asking to remove the language, the hideous language that was adopted in the social studies platforms. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Mark Clutho and Tony Boston.
I'm your current CDA over at Starky Elementary, VP Kable in the classroom. For those of you that don't know what CDA means, it's Child Development Associate. I am on the support staff part of it. To break it down, we have, our job duties are pretty much everything what a teacher does except for being a case manager. So pretty much, we do everything, the planning, the teaching and charting everything. And in order to have a VPK classroom, you have to have the CDA. So just to kind of highlight that. For my pay grade as it is, I only bring home 22K a year, a little more than that. So on perspective for a weekly, or I should say bi-weekly paycheck, it's just under $700 a bi-weekly. And that's including me having insurance for me and my daughter because I am a single mother. So take that into perspective, too, when you're thinking of living wages for all of us. So I just want to let you guys know that, yeah. Thank you.
Mark Clutho Largo. You need to read the book. War is a racket. General Smedley Butler awarded two medals of honor. Yeah. War is a racket. How about this? Vouchers paid for TVs, Disney. Yeah. You get that from Governor Ron DeFure and the Republicans. That's welfare for the rich. Yes, isn't that wonderful? And here we have, they lurk inside our everyday stuff, what our forever chemicals are doing to us, or as I like to say, forever poisons. I circled the water. So what are you doing? Antarctica sea ice at unprecedented low. And as I said before, soon our oceans could feel like Jacuzzis. Hotter oceans pushed July to be Earth's warmest month on record. And I believe August surpassed that. As I said before, we shape our buildings thereafter they shape us. Winston Churchill, September 12th, 1960. Winston Churchill, September 12th, 1960. The science of high-performance passive solar buildings is a straightforward proposition that puts students and teachers in healthy learning environments that can be hurricane-proof. That I don't understand why the teachers aren't demanding that you provide the science that can mean they can get better pay, that'll provide for a livable future for their students. What in the world is the holdup? The planet is burning.
The next two speakers are Nicholas Esposito and Ms. Angela Taylor Sweet.
All right. I just began my career as a middle school teacher down in Tyrone. If the state reports are to be believed, we will have brought an F school up to a B school with the small amount of funding provided to us as a transformation zone school. It wasn't these out-of-state contractors, it wasn't these billionaire-backed and funded contractors who gave us the resources that were needed to improve this school. It was a little bit of time, it was a little bit of appreciation for the teachers. It was none of these con artists who managed to bilk the taxpayers of this state from here all the way to Tallahassee that managed to improve the schools. Now, if you want the used car salesmen, if you want all these people who are moving out of the state, from out of state into Pinellas County and driving up the taxes, or sorry, sorry, driving out, up the housing prices so high that regular people cannot stay here, if you want them teaching in your schools, then you're more than welcome to let them try. Because the regular working people of this county, working in your service industry, keeping your tourist industry alive, keeping all these things running at the efficiency so that we have any tax base whatsoever, they can't take care of their kids. All these things about homeschooling, who's paying for that homeschooling? The only thing that could actually manage to give the working people of this county a chance to go to their jobs and keep this county running and keep themselves and their households is the public school system. I live up in Clearwater, still with my family. I cannot even fathom going out and moving out of my house because of how expensive it is. Forget any roommates, I can't even fathom it with roommates. I live with my family still up in Clearwater, and every day I drive past Enterprise High School. Do you know what that is? It's in a strip mall. It was a charter school. Lines and rows of computers right next to each other, empty, abandoned, in a strip mall hidden away in the back. If you let the public school system collapse, that is the future for most of the people in this county if they don't have families to go and nestle them away at a school like Kezic, at a school like Northeast. I can say that because I have family who went to those schools and got a half decent education, but not as good as mine at Pinellas's public schools. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor Sweet? The next two speakers are Celeste Rocher and Lindsey Blankenbaker.
Would it be possible to hand you some photos? Good evening, my name is Celeste Rocher. I'm a teacher at Belcher Elementary School. In September of 2022, I was walking to my car after school with colleagues, and a colleague of mine tripped over the handicap barrier and landed heavily on her knee. Filled out an accident report, and when we met with the safety committee, I suggested that maybe they be painted, painted bright yellow so that we can see them when we're walking out. I was told that they did not have the time or the manpower to do that. On December 9th, I was working on the afternoon car line, and the microphone batteries died. So I had to rush towards the office, and as I'm changing the batteries and turning to rush back out to the car line, because everyone knows what an elementary school car line is like, I tripped over that barrier. And you can see in the pictures there that the barrier looks very similar to the faded white lines that are painted on those handicap spots. It's taken me nine months, I've wanted to be here to speak to you. Because it's such a simple fix. It's such a simple fix. What you paid, what your insurance paid for my surgery, my anesthesia, I put pictures there of the hardware that is now in my leg. My life will never be the same again. And it's a simple fix. There's no law that says you have to have them painted. I've looked into it, because I couldn't understand why, it's so simple. And it's basically up to you. If you find it's of value, if you find we are important enough, you have thousands of students, thousands of teachers, thousands of staff, thousands of visitors going to your schools and your, your buildings every single day. Those handicap barriers, we should feel safe walking in. And you can see from the pictures that one of those barriers is right there at the entrance way to the school. My principal was very upset, had the county come out and evaluate, and they said, everything is fine the way it is. I disagree. If we can get those things painted and save somebody else from falling and having the injury that I had, please, it's, it's a no-brainer to me. Find it in your budget to come up with a couple of.
Hello again, I'm Lindsey Blankenbaker, Executive Director of PCTA and PESPA. And I am privileged to, to represent and tonight to speak on behalf of the members of our two unions. They're all laborers. The laptops you see open here in the audience, they're grading, sorry to look over y'all's shoulder, but they're grading, they're communicating, they're working right now as they're participating in this crucial democratic process. They're all laborers, many of them are veterans, including our president, Lee Bryant, or family of veterans like our PESPA president, Nellie Hennessy. And though a previous commenter who doesn't appear to any longer be in the audience accused them of hating their country inexplicably, they are too humble, but I'm too proud of them to fail to say on their behalf, you're welcome. I also say thank you for the superintendent's highlight of PCS new Common Student Discipline Referral. This advancement was developed from expanded state law and also PCTA and PESPA's grievance to protect the safety of all educators and all students. This includes a common referral system or form, we are moving towards an online form, an online tracking and oversight system that expands the site and the district's opportunity to preempt problems, to avoid problems and injuries, to avoid catastrophic injuries like what has happened to our staff that brought this grievance about, and to include and expand educators' access to data to best support, again, all students. Even though this began in conflict, it resulted in collaboration, it resulted in a meaningful solution. And this collaboration between the district and our unions isn't always spotlighted, and it's far from perfect. But it is effective ensuring the strength, in ensuring the strength and the safety of our schools, and of course, our most important stakeholder, our students. We may not always begin in agreement, it's kind of the nature of the work that we do together. But when we work together, all stakeholders win. Again, most importantly, our students, they win. So thank you for that collaboration, and we look forward to expanded opportunities for just such working together. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Elizabeth Weinstein and Angela Houston. Elizabeth Weinstein or Angela Houston? The next two speakers are Renee Chia and Lydia Guevara.
Hi, my name is Lydia Guevara. I'm an ESC para-professional at Tyrone Middle School. I'm responsible for supporting three autistic students in their classes. They all need one-on-one attention and smaller class sizes, but with the shortage of teachers and support staff, I just have to do my best to make it work. I work 40 hours a week. My take-home pay is $1,400 a month. My rent is 48% of my income. I share a one-bedroom. My roommate sleeps on a pull-out couch in the living room. I have to always think strategically about what I spend money on so I don't run out too quickly. This adds a lot of stress to my life on top of the stressful work I'm doing. The Tampa Bay area has consistently seen some of the highest rates of inflation in the country. In the last year, we've seen a 7.3% increase in the rate of inflation. Pinellas County Schools is currently proposing a mere 3.5% raise for teachers, which would actually be a pay cut. With the rise of corporate power over our basic rights, we're seeing our conditions rapidly deteriorate. We need to fight back. We need to fight back against the corporate developers and landlords price gouging us in order for us to keep a roof over our heads. We need to fight back against the private school executives that are lining their pockets with public taxpayer dollars to provide a worse quality education to our children. It's time that the government, whether at the city council level, school board level, or state level, works for us and not for the ultra-wealthy. We need massive investments in our public schools and public housing. The fight for quality education and housing justice are one and the same. It's us against the rich. Take Tomlinson Adult Learning Center. This is public land owned by the, owned by the school board, it could be used for public housing for the thousands of school district employees who are being forced to leave the county or even the state because of the greed that is making us poorer. Instead, three developers are trying to take it over to use for luxury housing and quote-unquote workforce housing that para-professionals don't even qualify for because of our low wages. We aren't going to allow for a complete corporate takeover of our communities. We are going to fight back and continue to organize in our labor unions and tenants unions. We are the majority, we are the people who run this county. Join the fight, get involved, don't sit on the sidelines, we need to come together to win. I invite everyone to come to PCTA bargaining on September 13th at 4:00 PM and PESPA bargaining on September 18th at 4:00 PM. They're at 650 Seminole Boulevard and are open to the public. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Donna Grace and Carol McNamee. The next two speakers are Janet Cunningham and Steve Beatty.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Janet Cunningham. I am an ESC teacher at Calvin-Hunsinger. I've appeared in front of you many times over the years, and most of the times, I talk about the same thing I'm going to talk about tonight, and that is our support staff. The back of my shirt has a quote on it. It says, "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much." Anyone who has worked with the support staff in Pinellas County Schools knows how vital they are for our being able to provide for our students. As an ESC teacher, I rely on my MBA, which is my supporting staff person, the equivalent of a para. Every time I think about the duties that this woman has, I am impressed that she has stayed with the county for 16 years. She can't live in Pinellas County, it's too expensive. She drives by our school and goes further south to be able to do her bus duties, to then get her car and drive by the school again to go to Pasco County. She's alone on the bus with some very dangerous students. I know you know what I'm talking about because I see heads nodding. If you don't know, come to my school, get on a bus, and see what this woman does. I listened to several speakers tonight talk about what they earned as support personnel, the CDAs, the paras. I make much more as a teacher. And still, what we're hearing is the importance of providing a living wage. Please recognize the work conditions of our support personnel. They are imperative to the mission of Pinellas County Schools. They love their jobs, they work one-to-one with the kids in areas that I'm sure many of us would never consider working. Helping, holding, diapering, toileting, feeding. My ESC colleagues up there on the board, you understand. Please, please, beyond your support, which you do give, please recognize the difficulties that these personnel face, and please consider them as you deal with PESPA in their bargaining. Thank you.
Steve Beatty? The next two speakers are Elle Chesson and Kelsey Donigan.
Hi, my name is Elle, and I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm also a healthcare worker here in Largo. I'm speaking today in support of PCTA and PESPA's bargaining efforts, specifically the demands on wage increases for all Pinellas educators and free before and after childcare as much of the staff have children and grandchildren in our schools. It is not news to any of us that we are in a growing economic crisis due to corporate greed. Debt stress is growing among workers while the rich get richer. Mortgage rates and rent costs are skyrocketing in the Sunshine State and across the country. Many workers are faced with the choice of paying bills or buying groceries. Defaults on auto loans are on the rise, and childcare is extremely unaffordable, which again, directly affect the staff who have children at our schools. In fact, all of these issues I just mentioned deeply affect our educators and para-professionals. I may not be in education, but as a healthcare worker, their fight is our fight because we as workers make this county run. We cannot let our public education system crumble and fall into the hands of private corporations that want to swoop in and make a profit, which is the direction we're headed in here in Florida. We see what that looks like with healthcare, an industry that should be public and guaranteed but has been heavily privatized, allowing CEOs to make over 300 times the amount of the workers. And on this topic of healthcare, I also support the union's demand for no increases to insurance premiums because healthcare is a human right. With all that being said, it's not hard to figure out why teachers are leaving education in droves. When we don't pay teachers and support staff a living wage and we slash their benefits, we're not only affecting their material conditions where, you know, they can't afford to live where they work, or they can barely afford groceries or necessary medications, but we're also sending a message that but we're also sending a message that education does not matter and that being a worker of the school system is not a dignified and valuable job. But that does not represent the popular opinion. Most people value education and the hard work that goes into making it happen each and every day, and most people do want a bright future for their children. But this cannot happen if we don't make it possible for the workers to survive. If we sit back and let the rich elites dictate how we run our schools, it is time Pinellas County educators and support staff get a truly fair raise, at least seven-point-three percent. Wage increases now, free before and after school programs now, nothing less. The labor movement is growing, and we're not going to step back until we get everything we are owed. With that, I want to reiterate what Lydia announced earlier, that if you support these demands, please come out to PCTA's next bargaining session on September thirteenth at four, and PESPA's on September eighteenth also at four, both at six fifty Seminole Boulevard. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name's Kelsey Donigan, I am very fortunate to be a teacher of English one and pre-AP English one and two under the phenomenal administration at St. Petersburg High School. I'm here to ask for your help, to the extent that it can be given as county school board members. I'm sure you're all familiar with the history of canaries and coal mines. I'm here to offer warning that the canary of education in Florida is dead. You're all well aware of the number of vacancies in our county as well as the state in general. To be clear, I know that public sector employment is down across the nation, but there are plenty of states that have nowhere near the number of classroom vacancies that Florida has. I know this because I know several teachers all across the state who have left or are looking to leave Florida for states that have better pay, better benefits, smaller class sizes, more planning periods, and all of the things that allow us to be better at our jobs while affording to live near our schools. In their search, they are coming across school districts with near-zero vacancies. The exodus from Florida is gaining momentum. As more teachers leave, class sizes increase. Our state administration continues to implement deleterious policies that make our jobs more difficult, more dangerous, and more hostile to work, more hostile work environments. As a caveat, how is an organization as openly and proudly partisan as PragerU possibly allowed in our schools? On a positive note, I'd like to commend you for approving free lunch for all students in Pinellas County Schools. That's a tremendous achievement and is a great step forward and helps our students out very much. However, we as teachers need your help too. We need you to communicate with Tallahassee about ways that will actually keep teachers in this state that will make sure teachers here are not overwhelmed, worried for their safety, and are able to afford in the cities they teach in. Thank you, I yield the rest of my time.
The next two speakers are Sarah Peacock and Tracy McConnell.
Hello, I'm Sarah Peacock again. Thank you for hearing our concerns. In the last meeting regarding the legislative platform, it was such a relief and so refreshing that you adjusted the legislative platform to reflect the needs to hold private and charter schools accountable to the same standards as public institutions. I really appreciated seeing you guys discuss that, and I really appreciated watching you in real time take our concerns and turn them into something helpful for our students. I would like to once again uplift the faculty and staff of Pinellas County Schools. It is blowing my mind, it is unconscionable that a person in our county is being paid less than fifteen hundred dollars a month. That's insanity to me. I do want to touch on a current event. In recent court filings regarding the Don't Say Gay bill, Florida Attorney General Ashley Moody stated HB fifteen fifty-seven's meaning is clear. It applies to formal classroom instruction, not library books. So I encourage you to demand an explanation and clarification from the Department of Education, and I ask that you share that information with us quickly. As you can see from these proceedings, over and over again, we want access and we want representation. Doing this work for us shows us that you're hearing us. And in an effort to end on a compliment, I would like to thank the five of you who voted to support the millage rate and reiterate some sentiments that you do have the opportunity in the upcoming legislative session to lobby for the students of this county and tell us how you're doing that. We would really appreciate it. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Tracy McConnell, and I teach third grade at Pinellas Central Elementary. I have been working at Pinellas County Schools for nineteen years, nineteen years at Pinellas Central. I'm going to start tonight by reading a poem to you that is called "Teacher," and there is an unknown author. "It takes a special person to teach a child in class to just keep his attention in a world that moves so fast. To show a child he is unique with talents deep inside, to help to build his confidence so he can beam with pride. To show a little patience for a child who's lost his way, to a child who feels abandoned, who has seen better days. To inspire and to motivate so a child can learn and grow, to go into this big wide world that has its highs and lows. You are a special person, you always give your best, and for every child that has your class, their life is truly blessed." I'm here tonight to make sure that you guys understand that teachers are the backbones of the school. Without teachers and support staff, your students aren't going to be learning. Not only do teachers teach students their core curriculum, reading, writing, math, science, social studies, all of those things, but in elementary school, I tie shoes, hopefully they're not wet, right? I say things like, "Don't lick that," and "If that's not food, please don't put it in your mouth." We only eat food, right? I have to teach kids not just those core things, but also how to be people, right? They need to learn how to people and be kind people and be successful just being around each other. I comfort students when life gets hard for them. I know teachers that sometimes buy their students' shoes and clothes when they can't afford them. I have been there for students who have lost loved ones to either death or because there are family members who have gone to prison. I have helped students who have lost everything because of fires. Teachers are leaving the profession right now, and I know that earlier you said that you want to retain teachers. My question to you is, what are you going to do to actually retain them? People can't afford to live here. Something else has to give. So I'm asking you tonight to please take a look to see what are other districts across the state of Florida doing that allows them to give larger raises than what Pinellas County is doing? Something has to happen or you're going to run out of teachers. Thank you so much.
The next two speakers are Tori Lindeman and Shannon Vincent.
Good evening, I'm Tori Lindeman, and I'm a parent at, I have two kids at Dunedin High School and one who's also graduated and is a student at USF. And I just want to be here tonight to really just support the teachers and just, you know, and also just acknowledge that I really do feel like we have a fantastic public school system here in Pinellas County. Really proud of the work that the board has done and administrators at our schools. And, yeah, so with the teachers, absolutely, you know, compensation, we need to support them with that, you know, agree with the need for them to have a livable wage. You know, teachers aren't in it to get rich. My wife is also a teacher, she's up in Pasco County and teaching up there, and they're in it because they're passionate about their students, passionate about kids, teaching them, you know, how to be, how to become adults. And, you know, so one of the things I did want to make a note of too is really encouraged to hear that you guys did address some of the safety concerns that were brought up, I think it was a couple months ago, somebody had mentioned the common referral process, so that's excellent. But beyond that, we need to trust our professionals. Teachers are trained in how to, how to teach kids and how to do that effectively. You know, us as parents, yeah, you know, we do our best to teach our kids, but educators, you know, they're professionals, so, you know, want to support the librarians, the media specialists, you know, those that are in, using the curriculum that we have. And one of the things, you know, I have found that's a bit concerning is some of the excessive challenges to, you know, books and curriculum and in our, in our school system, and I find that to be really disruptive. Let's trust our teachers, let's trust the professionals that have, you know, that we've hired to do a job. And, yeah, so let's, you know, support them. Thank you so much.
Hi, thank you so much for your time tonight. My name is Shannon Vincent, I've been teaching for twenty-three years in Pinellas County Schools, and I'm currently at St. Petersburg High School. Every day I scan my school parking lot and every day I see my colleagues working outside of contract hours, including me. Not just minutes, hours. An hour before school starts, a couple hours after contract hours end, and that doesn't count all of the hours we put in at home. Sometimes we say we're going to try to work to contract, but it doesn't last long. Teachers want to do a good job, we want to serve our students, so we work all the time. I know this isn't news, and I knew twenty-three years ago that it went with the job. But I didn't know that as a single parent of two, I would be so poor and so ashamed of the place where I live because I cannot afford to fix the roof that won't stop leaking or replace the clogged pipes in my house. After a long day of putting my whole self into teaching my students to read and write, I do not have a haven to go home to. I can't afford to fix it, and I can't afford to move, it's a catch-22. I cannot afford to live in the same community where I teach and the city where I grew up. I am drowning in debt, but yet I work all the time. If I didn't, I would not be an effective teacher, and this district depends on that. It depends on my free labor, of all teachers' free labor, to do everything we need to do to move students to the next level. To do everything the district requires of us and everything we require of ourselves, we cannot get it all done within contract hours. So we should have, at the very least, a decent place to live. My ask is that this district finds the money to pay all teachers, not just new teachers, but all teachers, veteran teachers too, so that we can work in the community where we live. Thank you.
The next speaker is Brad Decort.
Good evening, my name's Brad Decorty. I was a teacher at Tarpon Springs Middle School for twenty-two years until I retired last year. I had a written thing to speak about tonight, but after listening to everybody talk, all the teachers and all the extra work they do and low pay, it brought back all those memories to me. All the, all the family time that I wasted, doing, trying to do papers at home. Time with my wife, who passed away in two thousand eighteen. And then it's like I started reflecting back, that's why I finally left last year. I could, I couldn't deal with it anymore, I needed some time with my family. I still have two boys, they're older, but we still spend a lot of time together. I, you know, all the plans we had, they're all gone. The times I, in hotel rooms, when my family's doing something and I'm grading papers, or I'm reading text, or I'm taking care of lesson plans, all of those things that I can't get back. And that was one of the reasons that I, as I reflected back in deciding to leave, I left. So that was, that was just something, and I, and I sat in the back and I watched people on their computers doing grades. And I remember those days, and it was, it was only last year, but I remember all that time that I used up with, that could have been family time. Now, what I really came to say tonight was that yesterday we commemorated one of the worst days in American history, September eleventh, and the attack on the Twin Towers, the Pentagon, along with the plane taken down in Pennsylvania. After these attacks, the United States appeared to come together and become a friendlier, nicer place for a while. But that didn't last very long. Over the last twenty-two years, we have become a divided nation again, and it's even worse than it was before. And of course, schools are placed in the middle of that. And the casualties in that, in that case are the students and the teachers and the staff. We have to deal with all of those things. And one of the things is, we argue about everything, okay? We get on kids about how they want to be, how they want to be treated, how they want to be seen, what pronoun they want to use. As an English teacher for twenty-two years, I never thought pronouns would be a problem, but they have become a problem. It's time to return to, you know, when people showed compassion for each other. We have to back, you know, kind of come together again. And when kids are suffering, we need to make sure we take care of them. And when teachers are suffering, take care of them, and staff.
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no more speakers.
Thank you all for coming this evening, and thank you for, for your words. The board will now do our board evaluation in the back, and with that, we hope you have a wonderful evening. Thank you.